Good evening and welcome to the public hearing of June 28th, which I'm going to call the order right now. This meeting is convened by electronic means, and as such, council members may participate in person or by electronic means. For those members participating by electronic means, please ensure your video is turned on and let the clerk know if you leave the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. Just under Section 14.13 of the procedure bylaw, members must enable their video to confirm quorum, and any member whose video is disabled will be marked as absent for that portion of the meeting. If you lose your connection during any portion of the hearing, we will recess until the connection is restored. Members of the public can view the proceedings via the live stream in YouTube link, which will be tweeted out on Twitter. @Vancityclerk is the handle. Of course, as always, we acknowledge we're on the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Slavey people, and thank them for having care for this land and their generosity to all of us as we move forward in partnership, building a true city of reconciliation. And thanks very much to staff for, of course, all your unsung efforts, so I'm going to send them here for you. Clerks, go ahead and roll call, please.
Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr, councillor DeGenova, councillor Frye, councillor Swanson, councillor Hardwick, councillor Weeb is on a leave of absence, councillor Boyle, councillor Dominado, councillor Blais on a leave of absence this evening, councillor Kirby Young.
Present.
You have quorum, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much, clerks. Before we begin, there's just some things I'll go over. First, the public may participate by speaking over the phone, submitting written comments, or speaking in person. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered, and you should also state whether or not you are in support or oppose the recommendations, and if you are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter for updates and progress of the meeting, so you don't miss your turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing through our online web form at That link is also on Twitter. Just some new additions to the script here that are worth going over. Council is committed to ensuring all people who participate in Vancouver's public hearings are treated fairly and respectfully. The language we all use in public hearings should reflect respect for all residents, and no form of discrimination is acceptable or tolerated, and if discussions kind of start veering into that area, I will quickly intervene to get us back on track. Discriminatory language includes attacks on groups of people and individuals. Vancouver's procedure bylaw prohibits council members from the use of words, tone, speaking, or gestures that express a negative view of the character of any person or groups of people. Members of the public are expected to not engage in improper conduct, which includes the use of expressions that promote hatred or are defamatory. The creation of a safe and inclusive environment for the public, staff, and council to participate is all of our responsibilities, so members of council may call points of order if language used by another councillor during a meeting is not respectful. As chair, I'll ask the speaker to modify their speech to ensure they are using respectful language. I also want to note the city of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders, and I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we try to avoid using gendered honorifics. Instead, I refer to the person by the first and last name, role, or title. Just a reminder that unlike council hearings, this is a public hearing, and it is a quasi-judicial body, which means the council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heretics designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of the speaker's list. After we hear from the speakers, council may approve the application in principle, refuse the application, or refer the application to staff for future consideration. Finally, if council does not adjourn this public hearing tonight, we will recess and reconvene on Wednesday, June 29th, at 6:00 PM, right here in council chambers. So the first item on the agenda is a rezoning for 156 West Second Avenue, and just asking first if any member of council wishes to declare a conflict, to do that now, and the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by West Bank Projects Corp. to rezone 156180 West Second Avenue from I-1 Light Industrial District to I-1C Light Industrial District to permit the development of a building with light industrial and commercial uses. A building height of 46.5 metres and floor space ratio of 6.0 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing: nine pieces in support and four pieces in opposition, and this represents all correspondence up until 4:00 PM today.
Thanks so much. I'm just trying to find my speaker's list here. There we go. Okay, council, we have... Any speakers that wish to speak to this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445 pound before the close of the speaker's list, and that number and codes are on Twitter and on the live stream. We have Teen Fan, the scenery zoning planner here, to present the application. Council, we do have one speaker to this item, I think? Yep, we have one speaker to this item, so we should go through the presentation, so the applicant team can go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Teen, senior rezoning planner for this application. It's for a rezoning to a district schedule to intensify industrial and commercial uses along a segment of Second Avenue. Just confirming that the public screen is viewable. The site is at West Second and Columbia Street on the northern edge of the Mount Pleasant Industrial Area, or the MPIA. It's currently zoned I-1, and the buildings are owned by Rogers Media-
Just going to hold you there. I'm just looking at the public stream, and it doesn't seem to be showing yet, so we'll just... You know, you're all warmed up, but I'll just have to hold you there for a sec. Okay. Proceed. Okay. Just so everybody knows, the presentation is showing on the two public streams, just not here in chambers, so we're just going to proceed, and it would get this back online as quickly as possible, so I'll get you to continue if that's all right.
Certainly. I think I left off in terms of its zoning. So it's currently zoned I-1, and the buildings are owned by Rogers Media and tenanted by their subsidiaries, including City TV and Omni TV. The remainder of the MPIA shown in purple here is industrial and commercial. To the north, we have Southeast Falls Creek, for buildings reaching up to 18 stories. There are a number of amenities close by, including parks, connections to the seawall, two community centers, and seven childcare facilities.
Yeah, it's still... It is on the two public screens, it's just not on this internal screen. It is on your WebEx... It's on your WebEx. Okay. Now, apparently, it's down on all streams, so what we're going to do is just take a recess, and we can start the presentation over again, if that's okay with you. It is 8:13, so let's take five minutes... Sorry, 8:13, 6:13, and let's take five minutes and try to get this back online. Thanks. Hey, council, if I can get you to return to your seats, and we'll take two here. See, two on screen, three, four, five, we need... Okay. It's okay. We're not... Don't think we're at any danger of finishing this hearing quickly, so... Okay, great, thanks. Okay, great. So, thanks. Teen Fan from rezoning, do you want to start from the beginning and just... That's all right with you?
I can.
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you. Good evening again, mayor and council. Teen Fan, senior rezoning planner, and this is an application for rezoning to a district schedule in order to intensify industrial and commercial uses along a segment of Second The site shown here is at West Second and Columbia Street on the northern edge of the Mount Pleasant Industrial Area, also known as the MPIA. It's currently zoned I-1, and the buildings are owned by Rogers Media and currently tenanted by Omni TV and City TV, including other subsidiaries of Rogers Media as well. The remainder of the MPIA is in purple, and it's also for industrial and commercial. To the north is Southeast Falls Creek, for buildings that reach up to 18 stories. A number of amenities are close by, including parks, connections to the seawall, two community centers, and seven childcare facilities. There are three Skytrain stations and numerous bus and cycling routes that connect the site. This subarea is designated as industrial under the Metro Vancouver Regional Growth Strategy, and since the 1940s, it has emerged as a unique employment space, supporting a diverse economy. Industrial here accounts for one-third of the total floor area, with the remaining as commercial, offering a mix of job space. Policies in the last two decades or so have further reinforced this area for the retention and expansion of industrial and office. For this rezoning, the enabling policy is the Mount Pleasant Employment Intensive Light Industrial rezoning policy, or the I-1C, approved last year for the south side of Second in between Quebec and Yukon Streets. This policy unlocks the economic potential of the area by increasing density and height for some 3,500 new jobs in the area. Shown on the left is the base I-1 zoning, and it permits three FSRs in which one-third of the total floor areas for light industrial. Similar to the Canby Quarter Townhouse process, rezoning for an I-1C also follows a simplified rezoning to an established district schedule. Eligible sites can redevelop to an I-1C zone with a predictable height, density, and use, and not to a custom CD1. Moving over to the next slide, rezoning to an I-1C effectively doubles the density to six FSRs and simultaneously doubles the required industrial uses to two. The remaining four FSRs can be commercial, and heights here also double. Since the rezoning to the I-1C focuses squarely on land use changes, architectural drawings are not required here at the rezoning stage. Applicants can then move more quickly to a public hearing and a subsequent development permit process. Design at the DP stage is to follow specific guidelines, including tower typologies, spacing between buildings, and public realm improvements, including maximizing sunlight and landscaping. This rezoning is to an I-1C in alignment with the policy at six FSR, which is two... For which two FSRs for light industrial, and the remaining is for commercial above. The building height is 152.5 feet, and from application to public hearing is less than seven months, representing a simplified process. This application could generate some 70 construction jobs. The public feedback has been minimal, and we received nine comments supporting density for job space and for simplified rezoning. Concerns were about heights and private views, along with clarification about the simplified We expect some $5.4 million in public benefits, including DCLs and a public art contribution based on achieving the full six FSR at the time of DP. Further, the Broadway Plan directs CACs from industrial-commercial projects in the planned area to be allocated to the public benefit strategy, which includes affordable housing, childcare, along with arts and culture space. Staff support this application to advance council's economic development priorities, and that concludes our presentation today, and happy to take any questions.
Thanks so much. See now... Just wondered if the applicant team is here to speak to the application?
Hello, mayor and council. This is Dave Lee Young. I represent West Bank Projects, in partnership with Rogers Communications, the owner of the property. We will not be presenting today, but we are here with the applicant team to answer any questions or comments that you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. I see councillor Kirby Young and councillor Weeb on the queue, and councillor Hardwick on the queue to ask questions to either staff or the applicant at this point. After we hear from the speakers, you'll only be able to ask questions to staff. Councillor Kirby Young, up to five minutes. I don't see councillor... Oh, maybe you're on mute, councillor?
Sorry, sticky mute button.
Okay.
The question that I have is with respect to the ratio for the light industrial to the commercial and the other uses, and I've given all of the dialogue that council has had and how much staff have underlined the small amount of industrial space that we have and how important it is to protect it. I'm wondering if you can speak to why the ratio is two-thirds commercial and retail, and only a third, even with the rezone FSR of six, only a third of the light industrial?
Thanks, councillor Kirby Young. We... For the rezoning to an I-1C, we maintain that 33% of that base I-1 to an I-1C, so we maintain the proportion of industrial and made sure that it was a minimum, allowing for an additional two-thirds to be commercial or retail. Shaun, did you want to add anything to that? But we wanted to make sure that that kept its industrial designation through the Metro Vancouver industrial work, so we haven't changed the proportions at all. In fact, we doubled what is currently allowed there in terms of floor area.
So just to reflect back, then, you're saying that the proportion remains the same, but we didn't take the opportunity to further intensify and expand the amount of industrial we have beyond maintaining the same ratio?
Councillor Kirby Young, correct. Yeah, we've maintained that one-third. It's a minimum requirement, so the applicants or applicant could either come forward at a future stage and provide at least one-third.
Okay, and that is the ratio that's stated in the IC2 policy? Is it explicitly stated in the policy?
Absolutely explicit, yes.
Okay, so the applicant is complying with the minimum, correct?
Sure. Yes, they absolutely are.
Okay, I'll leave it there for now, save my voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Weeb, up to five minutes. Councillor, staff or applicant?
Question to the applicant. In earlier renditions, there was talk about childcare. Can you talk about why childcare was taken out of the project?
Councillor, I think that question might be better suited for Teen Fan, the planner, to respond to. If not, I'm happy to do so.
Let's try that first, councillor Weeb.
Hi, councillor Weeb, it's Teen, senior rezoning planner. If I just could repeat your question, I think it was about whether or not childcare was initially proposed for this site, was it?
Yeah, sorry, it's a little bit loud. Yeah, it was originally proposed, so I'm just wondering why childcare was taken out?
Certainly, yeah. We won't... The I-1C rezoning policy still allows the provision for childcare at a future DP stage. It's built into the policy in terms of an allowable use, and we've actually created built form guidelines to maximize the opportunity for childcare, so it doesn't preclude them from coming in at a future stage for a 37 or a 56 space childcare. Councillor Weeb?
Okay, so childcare could still happen, but do we think that with the new zoning, it'll be promoting childcare for a unit like this, or because it's not needed on the site, we probably won't see it delivered?
I would say that the existing zone does promote it. We incentivize it by allowing a 10% relaxation of floor space built into the zone, and we've also crafted some future design guidelines to allow maximizing sunlight, ensuring it's properly oriented and properly located within the building. So I would say we have different mechanisms to further advance that work, should the applicant wish to come forward at a future DP stage.
Okay, then my question to the applicant, do they see coming forward in a future stage with childcare on the site?
Hello, councillor. Dave Lee Young here from West Bank. That is definitely an option that we can consider, but right now, the proposal does not include the childcare. Right now, the CAC is a cash contribution that's being proposed.
Okay, so you think the cash contribution is adequate to meet the needs of the community and the workers that will be working at the Rogers facility?
I can't say for sure whether that is sufficient or not. My understanding, councillor, is that there are a number of childcare facilities in the area, so collectively, I believe that would fulfill the need for childcare demand in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Thanks very much. I noted that there were three massing options given in the application, and I think the explanation is that it's leaving it to the DP stage to have any more detail given on it. Is there anything more? Because there is not a lot of detail here, other than the massing, that you can tell us about this proposal? us about this proposal?
Certainly, yeah. Just to remind council, it's actually a rezoning to a zone, and instead of council approving a particular building, it rezones to a zone that has set height, density, and use. So that means we wouldn't ask for drawings at the rezoning stage. Instead, we have clear guidelines at a future DP stage. My colleague Kevin can also add to that if you wish.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add very quickly, we haven't done a formal development analysis on massing that's proposed. However, the built form principles are worked into the rezoning policy, and they're very explicit about what forms of development we are able to and will approve at the DP, including, say, overshadowing performance criteria across the street. So we haven't compared the application at the DP stage yet, because this is step one to those design principles, but the application will be required to meet those design principles.
Are there precedents, then, at that six FSR number in the adjacent area?
In the immediate adjacency, no. This is a new zone. We have one application that is completing its DP review right now, that's further west, that hasn't officially, I think we're at prior to stage right there, prior to response stage with that DP application. In this case, we would be looking to the modeling that we prepared when we prepared the built form principles in the rezoning policy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's it for questions. So let's go to the public. We have one member of the public listed. We have Stephen Boas is here in person to speak to this item, and I'll just wait for you to get situated and get your presentation loaded up.
I have it on my laptop, if that's any easier, but. Okay, and it's timed, so if you just press play, it all advanced every like 15 seconds or so.
Okay, I think it's easier if you just let us know what slide you're on?
No, no, it's much easier if you just press play, because it's timed.
All righty, if it gets out of sync, though, just let us know. Okay, five minutes, whenever you're ready. Press play.
Thank you, Mayor and councillor. Good evening, your worship councillors. And I see it's going on place. I'll be very quick. I'm a renter in Vancouver. I know the area, and I've commented on this project before. It's in the Mount Pleasant industrial area. I used to work in the area, and I was involved in the Mount Pleasant Implementation Committee. What's being proposed? Well, you've got these three tower forms. It's a very large site, and I'm just really wondering whether it's a terrace form, a tower form, I guess a childcare form is out, but if you look at the size of the site, it really, really needs more detail because of the, is it advancing? Because it should be advancing.
If you just say next, we'll move the slides.
Next slide, next slide.
Thank you.
We're gonna have a lot of next slides. Okay, so this is the sign at the DP, and there isn't a lot of detail, and there haven't been a lot of comments, so I don't think the community's really been engaged here. If we go to the next slide, please? Well, considering that, you know, you're asking for a floor space ratio of six, height of 152 feet with light industrial office uses, there's been always no feedback, and there's really a lack of specific design concept and response to this environment, and we're getting some advancing here, so that's good. And if you look at across the street, and the entire concept of having a new building fit this street and to make West Second a great street, you really have to respond to the materials, to the form, and do a robust urban design analysis. This is the north side. We look at the other side from Third, you can see across the laneway, the dishes on the building, and also the southeast Falls Creek area with the towers in the back, and there was some specific planning made for southeast Falls Creek in the area with the official development plan. I have another slide, which will be coming up, also showing the building, so I'm really curious about the response to the laneway, the response to Columbia, and all the other urban design analysis here, as well as the light and shade. There's a lot of issues with scale if you look at something this large. Here is the ODP for southeast Falls Creek. That really shows how the height would decrease into the industrial area. This is decades' worth of planning. I realize that's been changed recently, last year when I spoke to you with this diagram here, and this was passed in June, or January of 2021. I requested this data via FOI, this is geospatial data. The FOI department refused to give it to me, and this would have really greatly helped with the analysis, because there are a lot of shadow diagrams there, and it would have been great to be able to independently verify and do analysis, and this is data already paid for by public funds. It's geospatial data, it's usually released via FOI, so I don't understand why the city is withholding it. If we go down a couple of blocks, this is the DP that was spoken of, and you can see the difference in the diagram shown by planning, which is a block to the right-hand side to what's in the DP, and I think there's a little bit of a disconnect. This is why it's very, very important to have a final design to be analyzed. If you look at the sidewalk condition, the shadowing, and so on, and the site on the left-hand side of the screen, there is, there's going to be a response, there's going to be a streetscape. It's a very, very large site. I'm not sure is Rogers looking to move away to come back? And there are the issues of shadowing, where if we look at West First with a tall group of buildings on one side, in the winter, it gets very, very dark if you don't have proper urban design analysis and planning to make for access to light. Now, this is what planning showed a few minutes ago. This is their diagram of what it could look like, and really don't see a lot of shadows here, but I'm really concerned about the streetscape and the lack of detail. I think we really need more detail to make a informed response. This is a Photoshop. This is in real life, taken two photographs and put them together, but this will show kind of the scale of West Second using West First. And, yeah, so in closing, light's precious, there's very little of it, and if I can have the last slide, please, I will urge council to send this back, get more details from the applicant, do a robust consultation, and really, let's have a building that we can work with here. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I don't see any questions for you. Councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Steve. Why do you think it's not sufficient to go directly to the DP process? As we discussed earlier, it's a new zoning, they're, you know, looking at it through the lens of massing at six FSR. Why is it insufficient? Because it seems to me that a lot of this could be dealt with at the DP stage.
I think very little information's been provided, like, the DP stage really leaves the public out of the discussion, and we could have a lot of the dialogue now with a rough form of massing. And if people don't see a diagram there on the rezoning application sign, there's no engagement. You've got, what, nine letters or so? If there's a building, even a concept of massing, you have that discussion, and I think we're short-circuiting that process, and this is going to be a permanent fixture if it's approved here by council.
Isn't it consistent with the massing that's contemplated along that whole line there on Second?
Well, if you look at some of those massing diagrams, you know, there could be significantly more shadows on some of those massing diagrams than some of the other ones, so it'd be really good to know which options being contemplated, because know what kind of light industrial use is being contemplated here. Is it for Rogers? Are they going to let rent this out? Is all the office for Rogers? Are they going to move away and move back? Is this for another? Like, there's so little information to go on, we don't even know, like, what kind of light industrial are they looking for here?
But it's going to be light industrial, and it's going to have commercial activity where across the street is residential, retail at grade, and there's no question that there's going to be shade looking at that orientation. Do you think that the people that are living in that residential area across the street don't care or are unaware, or what's your?
I think they just simply don't know that this is going on, and what the implications, even if they get a little postcard. You know, some of them could be renters. I'm not sure which of the buildings are rentals, there are some rentals there, and some of them can be owner-occupied condos. Regardless, I don't think people across the street really know what's being contemplated by that plan diagram.
Well, just thinking about it, who's going to be spending time facing the street, I guess would be, I mean, you're going to be facing in the northern direction, not south. But thank you very much for your presentation.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Thanks so much. That's it for questions. Appreciate you coming in tonight. Council, that's it for registered speakers, so I am going to make my first call for speakers to this item. 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445 pound. I'll just check with clerks if there's anybody in the gallery or on the line. Sorry, it's the jabber. Thanks. We have Cara Sinigan is on the line.
Hello.
Hi there. You have up to, all right, just going to ask, as per our bylaws, are you a resident of Vancouver?
I am.
Great, okay. Please go ahead, up to five minutes to comment on this item.
Great, I'm just calling in support of the development. I do work in the area and help with clients looking for spaces in the area, and I've seen a strong demand from that client base, and I'm a resident in the neighborhood as well, and I'm strongly in favor of this development specifically.
Okay, is that all?
That's it.
Okay, great, thank you so much for your time. I don't see any questions for you, and I'm going to ask the clerks now for our second call for speakers. Anybody else on the line, or I don't see anybody in the chamber?
No.
Okay, great, thanks. Council, then, will take five minutes just to let people time to call in or come to the chambers. It is 6:41. We'll come back at 6:46 to finish this item.
Yes, we have a speaker on the line.
Great, speaker, you can go ahead and let us know your first and last name, as well as if you're a resident of Vancouver.
Hi, I'm Jamie Spittle, and I am a resident in Vancouver, living just south of the proposed area in Mount Pleasant. I'll be very brief. I'm going to speak in support of this motion. I think that that area just needs a lot more space for light industrial and commercial. I come from an arts and culture background, so that's one of the zoning uses that I'm more interested in. It pitches their music and art, like music and jam spaces and type of things like that. That's it, I'd like to voice my support in it.
Great, thank you very much for calling in tonight. I'm going to check with the clerks if there's anybody else online.
No, no more speaker.
Okay, thanks very much, council. So I'm going to close the speakers list now, and, let's see here, yep, going to close the speakers list, and I'm going to close the receipt of public comments, and I'm going to ask the applicant, if the applicant has any closing comments.
No, Mayor, we do not have any closing comments. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Staff, have any closing comments?
No.
Thank you so much. Councillor Weave, you have questions for staff? Go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I guess my question to staff is recognizing the need for childcare as an amenity for the Mount Pleasant industrial area. Recently, some of the childcare funding went to fund the childcare in Bass Town. I'm wondering how we believe we're going to achieve our childcare goals, and was there conversations about trying to land childcare on this property, and how do we see that working moving forward?
If staff could just kind of contain it to the, not the general policy, but the specific project, that would be great.
Sure, definitely. Thanks councillor Weave. We definitely did explore some options with the applicant team very early on, recognizing that, you know, workforce supports, especially in terms of childcare, is especially needed. The applicant has also pointed out, and I would echo that throughout our presentation, there are a number of childcare spaces in the site. Further to that, in and around the site, but further to that, we do actually think that there could be additional possibilities through the rezoning policy along the segment of Second, because there are some nine development parcels eligible for additional opportunities for childcare. Further, the linkage contribution shown in the slide deck could also go towards childcare in and around the Metro Core area, and we've allocated some $8 million thus far through other linkage contributions for childcare. So there's mechanisms to support childcare, if not on this site, through cash contribution as well.
Okay, and then can you speak to a little bit about how that linkage could go to creating the arts district that's looking to happen in that area? Can you talk about how this project can help be a catalyst to improve the culture district that's contemplated for near and around that area?
Sure, councillor Weave. The recently approved Broadway Plan also amended the CAC policy. The recently approved Broadway Plan also amended the CAC policy and through that it was recognized that CACs collected in the Broadway Planning area could go towards arts and culture spaces. And in the Broadway Planning Public Benefit Strategy, it's been identified that arts and culture could capture some $45 million in the next 10 years and $55 million in the next 30 years. I don't know if our arts and culture staff here could further add to that response and happy to move it over.
Sure, I can speak. My name is Kristin Lambert and I'm with Cultural Services. So like routine said, definitely with the approval of the Broadway Plan, cultural spaces are now eligible for the community, the commercial linkage fees. And then we're also looking at other tools with PDS through the Broadway Directions in addition in terms of better supporting arts and cultural spaces in the area, including Broadway Directions like integrating amenity share contributions and density bonuses, as well as updating and developing policy to mitigate displacement and reducing regulatory barriers.
Okay, thank you very much. So much questions.
Thanks, Counselor Dominado, up to five.
Yeah, thanks, ma'am, and thanks, staff. Just one quick question. I'm wondering if you could just comment broadly on some of the considerations that Stephen raised in his presentation, particularly around street treatment and setbacks and sidewalks and just he was expressing some concern around lack of detail at this juncture. And so I'm just interested in your broad comments and response.
Sure, Counselor Dominado, for this particular site, now I'll let Kevin jump in as well, but we've required a whole lot of public realm treatment for the applicant for this particular site. We see a 3,500 square foot public plaza on the northwest corner and we've secured that through rezoning condition. We also see a significant amount of upgrades for Second and for Columbia, new boulevards, new trees, new lighting to enhance the public realm and also a five-foot dedication. So additional spacing, further setting Second back for vehicle movements and pedestrian movements as well and building to building interface, broadening that to the residents in southeast Falls Creek. Kevin, did you want to add?
Sure, yeah, thanks, Counselor Dominado. Kevin Spanz, senior development planner for the Metro Corps. I'll just add that in terms of the actual built form, some base performance criteria that we've introduced through the options that we modeled would at, at, I don't want to use the word worst, but at the most, uh, limiting in terms of solar access to the north side of West Second, the form that we would see would be a tower and podium form that would result in no more than across the entire block, 50% of West Second shaded at any or during the equinox. The best form or the most or the least overshading form would be a terrace form that actually results in no net shading of Second between the equinoxes.
Thank you. I appreciate your responses. Thank you.
Thanks so much. That looks like it for questions on this one. So can we, if somebody moves a recommendation, please?
I'll move.
I heard Counselor Cara first, I heard Counselor David Nobis second, so it's moved. I'm on the main queue. If anybody wants to speak to this, please put yourself on the queue. I don't see anybody on the queue, so I'm going to move to a vote on this item. Counselor Blythe is absent, so that is unanimous. Thank you so much, counsel. We're going to move on to this next item next, which is CD1 rezoning on King's Way. Just going to remind you that if you have a conflict of interest in this item, to declare it now and otherwise the clerk will read the application and summary correspondence.
This is an application by Fermosus Architecture to rezone 2970 King's Way from C2 Commercial District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building with 127 secured market rental units and commercial retail at grade. A building height of 24.6 meters and a floor space ratio of 3.96 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing, six pieces in support and three pieces in opposition, and that's as of 4:00 PM today.
Thanks very much. Just a reminder, the number to call in for this item is 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445, hashtag or pound. We have Jay Simon here and I hope your team's all situated. To speak to this application, however, counsel, we do have no speakers to this item, so if everybody's okay, oh, we do. We do, okay, I might have a different sheet I'm looking at. So let's go ahead with the, with the presentation, please.
Good evening, ma'am and counsel. My name is Simon Jay and I'm the rezoning planner for this application being considered under the secured rental policy. Is the presentation on the public feed? So is the presentation on the public feed?
Just checking, clerks, we're all good? Okay, yep, please go ahead.
We just need a moment.
Sorry about that. Okay, please proceed.
This application is being considered under the secured rental policy. The triangular shaped site shown in red is located in the Renfrew-Collingwood neighborhood on King's Way with frontages along Rupert Street and School Avenue. The site is a single lot, Zone C2. Surrounding properties on King's Way are Zones C2, RT2, and CD1, including four-story buildings opposite the site on King's Way and Rupert Street. To the south of School Avenue is Zoned RS1. This property has been vacant since the 1990s and is located opposite the Vancouver Public Library Collingwood branch. There are no residential tenants on site. Located within approximately 800 meters of the site are several parks, community spaces, and childcare. The site is well-served by transit. King's Way is part of TransLink's frequent transit network and within walking distance there is a rapid bus on 41st Avenue. The Joyce-Collingwood Skytrain Station is 1.1 kilometers away and there are also bike ways nearby. The Housing Vancouver Strategy sets a target of 20,000 new market rental housing units across the city to help address Vancouver's historically low rental vacancy rates. This rezoning application is being considered under the secured rental policy, previously known as Rental 100, which supports the development of new secured rental, market rental housing. The applicant submitted a rezoning inquiry prior to the recent SRP amendment and can continue to be assessed under this policy. The rezoning application was submitted on July the 15th, 2021, which represents an approximately 11-month review process to public hearing. It proposes to rezone the site from C2 to CD1 to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building containing 127 secured market rental units, of which 35% are family units. Commercial is proposed at grade and also in a mezzanine level. The proposed density is 3.96 FSR and the proposed height is 24.6 meters. The project is estimated to contribute approximately 168 construction jobs. This slide shows the average market rents for newer buildings on Vancouver's east side in the blue column and the relative affordability of renting when compared to the cost of home ownership shown in the red column. It also shows the proposed average unit sizes, which range from 425 square foot for a studio to 928 square foot for a three-bedroom unit. The proposed rental units will be secured for a housing agreement prohibiting the stratification of units. A virtual open house was held in September and October last year. Thirty-six pieces of correspondence were received. Support was expressed for the supply of new rental housing, the development of a vacant lot, and for the density, height, and massing. Feedback also included concern about the safety of the intersection at King's Way and College Street, insufficient parking, privacy and sunlight, and the density, height, and massing. In response to traffic concerns, staff have included rezoning conditions to improve the safety of the intersection at King's Way and College Street. The increase in traffic will be consistent with development occurring over time and the applicant will be required to meet the parking bylaw. The proposed height, density, and massing are appropriate and consistent with the rent, with the secured rental policy. This proposal is consistent with the secured rental policy and staff support this application subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions.
Thanks so much. Is the applicant team here to speak to this project? Would you like to speak or just answer questions?
Hi, this is Adam Gruchella.
And Tom Bluntin from Fermosus Architecture.
We're the architects on the team and we don't have a presentation tonight, but we are happy to answer any questions from staff and for counsel.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. There's two counselors on the queue right now for questions to staff or the applicant. Please go ahead, Counselor Swanson.
Yeah, to the applicant, is this going to be a pet-friendly building?
I think, we hope so. We're not, I don't think we're there yet and understand that from the owner. I think we'll do that in the next phase of the project to see what facilities that would take and what that would mean. So I think we've got a ways to go.
There's a lot of folks that like that. What about air conditioning? Is the building going to be air-conditioned?
Currently, we're evaluating that mechanical system on the building and it's a VRF system, so there's capacity for cooling in the system.
So, yes?
It has the potential for it. We're at rezoning right now as we move into DP and get into more detail. Decision will be made by the ownership whether it will be provided or not.
And the last question, are you going to do anything about the pollution from cars, particularly on King's Way there? Is there going to be any kind of air filter system so people don't have to breathe, you know, particulates from tires and brakes and stuff?
There's no system currently proposed of that sort. We are proposing reductions in the parking, both for the commercial and residential portions. So we are trying to minimize the amount of parking on site.
I'm talking about pollution from other traffic on King's Way mostly.
Yeah.
So you're not sure about pets, you're not sure about AC, and you're not sure about, you're probably not going to do the pollution abatement. Okay, thanks.
Counselor Weeb, up to five minutes. Counsel, staff or applicant?
My question is, I guess first to staff, is I'm wondering why the underground parking is going underneath the street right away, recognizing that is where the Water Course Covenant once was.
Rosemary Jaskovic from Engineering will answer that question.
Thank you for your question, Counselor Weeb. So sorry, if I understand your question correctly, you're wondering what the conflicts between?
Yeah, well, in the report, yeah, in the report, it talks about that the underground parking will go underneath the street right away. And I'm understanding from the maps, the street right of way was first put there because that's where the Water Course Covenant originally was. So I'm just wondering why we put underground parking where the current creek or former creek was.
Sure, so maybe to clarify, underground parking is not permitted under the proper street right-of-way, so we do take statutory right-of-ways, pardon me, underneath or at the surface for properties. So the statutory right-of-ways are intended to serve public pedestrian access. Parcades would not be permitted beyond the property line, if that's what you're asking. And then any Water Course Covenant, of course, would be required in order to protect the street. So there should be no conflict between any sort of parcade and water course on the site.
Okay, can you speak a little bit to the water course and how it's going to be protected?
I can speak at a high level to that, of course. So the Water Course Covenant is an agreement that's required to protect streams on site. That, those are streams that are identified from historical record. So effectively, the condition for agreement covers the land and requires that a stream be redirected if found. And quite commonly, those are through, you know, very common solutions like pipes or whatever. So there's not, there's, as long as the, I guess, ingress and egress point are maintained, that would meet the requirements of the Water Course Covenant.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Dominado, up to five?
Uh, thanks, ma'am. And I have one question with respect to, I'm looking at page eight for reference around transportation and parking. Recognizing with all, a number of these new and proposed developments is we're hearing from the public, they're seeing increased density and consequently impacts in terms of meetings for pedestrian crossings, beacons, and I note that's in the report that there is a focus on the public realm in terms of adding a new sidewalk on School Avenue, improved sidewalks and street trees and intersection markings. But what I'm curious about is when do we anticipate the delivery of those things and will it be? I understand in engineering that we're striving to have those delivered as, at the time that the development's complete, but that's not always possible. Because this comes up and we're having this come up with a number of developments right now is around timing of beacons being put in, pedestrian crossings, and so I'm just curious if you could comment on that. Is there any specifically CAC dollars as part of that? Hope that's clear.
This is also a question for Rosemary Jaskovic in Engineering.
Rosemary Jaskovic, again, senior transportation engineer, thank you for the question. So all of the conditions that are outlined, things like the standard frontage improvements that are required of this site would be required to be delivered prior to occupancy. They're all conditions that are required as part of the construction of the site. One that I'll point out in particular is a very, I guess there are intersection improvements at the intersection of school, college, and King's Way that are conditioned, so that is included in sort of what's outlined in the conditions. It's written as frontage improvements and includes improvements to the curb, curb gutter and sidewalk. That condition will facilitate sort of a normalization of that intersection. So this development will be required to provide sort of their half of that intersection improvement in particular. And then at the Transportation Department, through engineering, through capital program will be delivering the sort of other half of that intersection improvement at a later date. But through this project, they will be delivering all those frontage improvements and that's a requirement of their services agreement.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's all my questions.
Thanks so much, Counselor Cara, up to five.
Yes, thank you. First, I just want to ask a question about the near-zero emissions, which is stated in the report and ask the applicant what you're intending to do in terms of achieving near-zero emissions.
Yes, so we are required to comply with the low emissions green buildings policy for the city of Vancouver and there are numerous ways to comply, but that basically requires a robust and thermally efficient building envelope and as well efficient mechanical systems. And I believe on this one, we are all electric mechanical systems for heating.
Okay. Okay, good. And in terms of the capacity for cooling in the system, a question was already asked about that. And you said there was capacity for cooling. Can you tell me what the, I think you said there's, well, anyway, there is some, but I'm not sure specifically what kind of a system you're using. If it's not heat pumps, what is it?
Yeah, it's a VRF system. It's a refrigerant-based system. So basically refrigerant is circulated through the building and then there's units located at each floor that then distribute the heat appropriately. So we are, we're still working through the mechanical design with our consultant team and we will have clarity on that as we move forward through the design process.
You talked about distributing heat through the system. I'm specifically thinking, and that's good when we have a polar vortex, but when I'm specifically thinking, and that's good when we have a polar vortex, but when we have a heat dome, I'm interested in how the building will be cooled. I mean, we did lose 99 people in the last heat dome in the city.
Yeah, so we can, I believe it's, it's kind of like an air source heat pump on the roof. There are units that do distribute the waste heat in the summer, and the system does pull cooling. However, it's really down to the details of how it's calibrated, and that'll be done in consultation with our mechanical consultants.
Okay, and air source heat pump. Okay, that's answering my question. Thank you.
Thanks so much. That is it for questions. So we're going to move to the speakers list. We have Aaron Richardson is here by phone, actually. Aaron Richardson, are you there? Speaker number one.
Yes, Mayor Stewart, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Sure, okay, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. Yes, I just, I'm a resident and I'm also a business owner in the area of eight years. I am very well, I know all the community in the surrounding area. I think there's a lot of concern for the drive-in traffic that feeds the local businesses in that area. And I just wanted to go on record to say that there is considerable concern for those businesses being able to survive through the construction period of this, of this site. And, and as a result, are very curious to know how that is going to be handled, particularly since we are right on a very major artery in the city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the second speaker, who is Dell Crush. Nish, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on. Apologies for that. Yeah, as you make your way to your podium, we have up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I'm here to discuss the safety of the project too. And I know you mentioned Kingsway and College, which is not as dangerous, I consider, as a VRF to Kingsway and school. But the reason I'm here is because of the blind crosswalk crossing Rupert Street at Kingsway. I'm going to give you the layout of the land there. You've got a long, you probably, some of you, I hope, are familiar with it. You have a long uphill climb up Rupert Street to get to Kingsway. Kingsway is your crest. Right on the other side of Kingsway, where the development is, is the other crosswalk in a depression. When you're crossing there, you can't see the traffic coming up. The traffic can't see you, only in the first half, the west part. It's, that's what I'm talking about here. You have, if you go there and you see it, you know what I'm talking about. If you go there, go there as a driver and as a pedestrian. There's a light there. But what is happening now, over the last four or five years, I've been there about 51 years, I've been there over half a century, I feel I know this area fairly well. What's happening in the last four or five years because of the, the River District being built up, you've got thousands of new homes there with more thousands built, it looks like to me. Rupert has turned into a major thoroughfare from Grandview, from Grandview Highway on up over. It is busy all the time, 24/7, it seems like to me now. So what is happening now, and I've seen it more than once, is a lot of the cars are coming up Rupert Street, the light turns yellow, they see it at Kingsway. They're not stopping, a lot of them. They're going for the yellow, a lot make it through the yellow, some of them don't, some are going through the red. Going through the red is one, is one thing. What they don't expect is people crossing on the other side, because you can't see them, especially if you're shorter. So this development would be very handy and convenient, because there is a safe way about four blocks away, on the same side, Aladdin Drugs, about three blocks away on the same side. And the reason why I'm here is because there is an elementary school two blocks away on the same side. That's Sir Guy Carlton School. The development would be good for families with young children going to elementary school. They could walk across that crosswalk to get to school, two blocks away. You wouldn't drive. In reality, to me, from my experience there as a driver and a pedestrian, that is a dangerous, dangerous setup. During rush hour, it's not that bad, only because the traffic is so gridlocked there that it's a crawl. It's safe, I think. I live about a block away. On my corner, I've had two fatalities that I know of. One more died on a bike, but that doesn't count, that's not a pedestrian. I know this area well. Now, I'm going to have to say that again. If anyone is going to go and check this, check it in two ways, as the driver coming up the hill, and as the pedestrian trying to cross from the west to the east. And this is on the south crosswalk. When you step off the curb, the light says to walk, and you step off the curb, to see what I'm talking about, approach down about two or three feet from the child's perspective, and see what you see. All you see is the crest of Kingsway. You don't see any cars coming up, and those cars don't see you, the child.
Thank you so much for the comments. It is a five-minute limit. However, you do have questions from councillor Dominado and Carr, and so hopefully that will allow you to fill your presentation. You have a very detailed and thoughtful presentation, thank you. Councillor Dominado, over to you for five minutes.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks for coming in today. My question is, I appreciate you raising the concerns around pedestrian safety and in this area. Would you be supportive of this development proposal if you had some assurance that there is going to be some provisions to address these crossings, particularly the crosswalk that you've identified?
For the children, absolutely, yes. I've been there, I've been there since there's been a service station there. I've driven by those pipes. It seems like almost 40 years, not, not 30 years or 25 years, since, basically, there was a service station there. The tanks started leaking fuel into the dirt, and they were leaking more fuel than putting in the cars, so they decommissioned the service station. So yes, I would like to see something built there. What I couldn't help doing was go over, thinking of the development 60 or 70 years, and the number of hits, pedestrian hits there. I just can't quite get through that. If you can eliminate that, the children getting hit there, because you're going to have families want to go there, with an elementary school two blocks away, I would sure consider it. Except there's a little more involved, as I've just said.
No, I appreciate that, and I'll follow up again with staff, as I was asking some questions earlier on this subject. I know that they're listening, and I see heads nodding over there as well, but our staff are online as well from transportation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Councillor Carr and councillor Kirby Young, questions for you? Go ahead, councillor Carr.
Yep, thanks very much again. Appreciate you both coming in person and that detail. So since you have that knowledge and that detail, do you have any specific suggestions that we could follow through in terms of asking questions to staff on that would actually increase the safety at that crosswalk or at that corner?
Sure, but I just don't think they're doable.
Well, just try them.
Sure, having a, an overpass. But now how do the over people, the older, you know, how do you, it just, it doesn't make any sense to put the overpass there. I also looked at it to put other crosswalks there, further down, on School Street. You can't do that. It doesn't make any sense. You're going to back up the traffic on Kingsway now. You, it, there's no other place to cross. If you cross Kingsway first, and then cross on the other side where it's safe, and then came back, that's one way of doing it. That's how I would have my children do it, if they were going to school. But that just seems, it seems kind of counterproductive. Safe, but counterproductive. That other side is safe to cross on, where the, where the library is and where that sort of mini mall, if you want to call it, is. That is safe. But this depression, the lay of the land there, to have that crosswalk there, I consider it very dangerous.
So you're saying that if they cross at a different, at that different corner at Kingsway, would that have to be coupled with maybe, with a closure of the crosswalk that is the dangerous one that you're talking about?
Uh huh. No, I don't, so I don't completely understand your question. One more time, please?
It's just that you're saying that if people cross at a different intersection to Kingsway, and don't cross at the crosswalk that you say is the dangerous one, do you suggest that that danger, if pedestrians are to be directed more to the Kingsway crosswalk that you talk about?
This is the Kingsway crosswalk.
Okay, well, you said there, where the library and the mini mall is, though.
But that, that's the other side. So that's where the majority of the crossings are right now, because that's where most of the traffic goes, to the Fish and Chips Place or to the library. So the reason, this, there's very little, there's very little crossings on this crosswalk right now, virtually none, because there's, there's no development there, and there's no, there's no reason to, to cross there, other than to go to the Dairy Queen, which, you know, is neither here nor there. So it's not being used. If you start, if you start using it with 127 homes, and how many, 42 or 43 families? Is that right?
Just, we're not supposed to answer. We're just listening to you at this point.
Oh, okay, well, I heard them say, I just watched their presentation, so I'm just asking them what their, for their numbers that they just showed me. So it looks like 42 or 43 family homes there. I consider family with, with the children going to the school. I mean, I would, I would, in a heartbeat, I would consider going there if I had a school-age child, elementary school age. The reason I'm here is, I don't think that's a good fit at all. This seems like a commercial development, like a C2 fit to me.
We'll ask, we can ask questions of staff and follow up, but again, thank you very much for...
Okay.
Thanks, you do have questions. Councillor Kirby Young, you're up next, five minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just have one clarification question, in case I wasn't, I didn't hear. Did I hear, have you specifically been in touch with the city with respects to concerns for this particular location, and made any actual requests for pedestrian improvements in the area?
No, I haven't, because I just became aware of it. I'm happy to say I've got the pamphlet in the mail that this was going on. And so I'm, you know, I've, I've really not comfortable speaking in it like this, but this is, I consider this extremely important, and that's why I'm here. So no, I haven't gone and done anything. I thought this was my approach to get this, to get this into your, you know, on your pallets there, you know, on your, on your table.
Yeah, no, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, and I really appreciate you making the time and effort to bring this forth. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Frye.
Yeah, no, and thank you for raising this. I'm, I'm looking at it on the Google map now, and trying to just wrap my brain around it. It seems to me that it's the crossings at college and school, respectively, that are really, could possibly be better controlled.
That one's dangerous too, because you have the traffic coming off of Kingsway at speed onto school. Now, the, you go through, right by the, the college street entrance there too, but they get a stop sign there. But that's not, that's not what I'm here for. There's, I have accidents in my, in my area all the time. I see the ambulances, I hear the fire trucks all the time. I am, I am here because of that crosswalk, and because of the children that are going to be going to the school.
So you're specifically talking about the Rupert and Kingsway crosswalk?
Yes.
But that's a light-controlled...
Well, that's what I'm saying. It was in here, it is light-controlled, but a lot of people go through that now, when they can.
Yeah.
They can't see, you can't see over the top, it's blind. And so if you consider, if the light turns yellow, a lot of people seem to try to make a, make a go for it. Some of them make it on the yellow, some don't. If they go, and some of them are going through on the red, and that's when people step off the curb.
So I do know from experience working with our traffic folks, that they can adjust the timing of the pedestrian signal lights and, and give a bit of a delay, so that people aren't doing that. So I think that, would that address some of those...
That would be a very good start.
Running the yellow and, okay.
What I think would be, what would be applicable, not applicable, this, what would be a good idea here, is to keep track of, do you keep track of how many hits you have, pedestrian hits in an intersection?
ICBC does track, track that exact data. So ICBC has a map and a heat map, and I quickly scanned it earlier, and it's not profoundly kind of detailed. There's worse intersections, for sure, but I take your point, and I also see that there's some traffic calming potentially that could happen around the college and school intersections, especially because you mentioned the Dairy Queen there, which I see, and obviously, that's an attractant for children, last I checked.
Sure. But again, I think you can, you're, you can see there, at least. You have, you don't have any, any visual impairment there. You don't have any, it's just, it just seems safer to me. I know it's safer there, because you can't see. With that said, yes, I've had people killed on my intersection, where there's absolutely no, you know, nothing, it's open, you can see it. But that one is built in. It hasn't been a problem, because nobody uses it right now to speak of. But if you're putting in the families with the kids going to school, again, that's, that's my main concern.
Yeah, no, I, I think we all appreciate you raising this, this is important detail, so thank you.
Thanks so much. That's it for questions, Frye. Appreciate you coming in this evening.
And I appreciate you letting me speak, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Clerks, we are going to go to our first call now for speakers, as we're at the end of the list. If there's anybody else in chambers, please make yourself way up to the podium. If not, I will check with clerks and see if there's anybody on the line.
I don't know.
Okay, great. Now we do the ridiculous second call, as mandated. So second call, anyone in the chambers, in the galleries, waiting outside or on the line? Clerks, anybody?
No.
Thanks. Okay, so I'm making our third call. It is seven, last is 7:37, it looks like, 7:27. Okay, thanks. So we'll come back in five minutes, it's 7:32 to conclude this item. Thank you. Thank you. That's okay. We're good. Okay. Right, so I'm just going to check with the clerks to see if there's anybody else on, anybody in the chambers who wants to speak with us? I don't see anybody. Anybody online, clerks?
No.
Okay, with that then, we'll close the speakers list, and we'll also close the receipt of public comments on this item. And we'll move to the applicant team, and applicant team, if any comments you'd like to make.
Yes, hi, hi, councillors and mayor. We just wanted to clarify that the first question posed by councillor Swanson about being pet-friendly, there is a dog run on the roof for pets, and there is a bike wash station in the below-grade parkade that can be used for, for dog wash as well. So to clarify your initial question about being pet-friendly, yes, it is a pet-friendly building.
Great, thanks. Any other comments?
Nope, that's, oh, the other thing was just on the pollution question from councillor Swanson as well. It is, it will have filters on the HVAC system, so your concerns about the pollution from King's Way, there is mechanical means that we will be filtering any air source pollutants through the system.
Okay. Last call, anything else? That's it, okay?
That's it from our side, thank you.
Thanks. Staff, do you have any closing comments?
No.
No closing comments, thanks. I see some questions here from council, councillor Frye, over to staff at this point.
Yeah, and I'm a little, I'm curious as to some of staff's impressions, especially given the speaker's comments, on how we can improve pedestrian realm and perceptions of safety, in particular around the intersection there at Rupert and King's Way, but also at school and college and even along, I guess, the school street there, and there'll be a lot of sort of ground level facing, and how we anticipate improving that for families and folks living there.
Yeah, Rosemary Jaskovic from engineering will answer this.
Rosemary Jaskovic, again, senior transportation engineer, for the question councillor Frye. So perhaps I'll start with what's already sort of built into the conditions as they exist currently. There's a number of, I touched on them a little bit earlier, but there's a number of transportation improvements required for the development to provide as conditions of enactment. So there are the intersection improvements at, I mentioned at college, school and King's Way to normalize that intersection. In addition to that, there are conditions that they extend the median further west. There's a similar condition on Rupert and School that requires them to extend the median further south. And I raise those, perhaps to kind of highlight what that does for pedestrian improvement, because it's perhaps not explicitly clear, so moving around the median improves crossing. And what that does also is it restricts certain traffic movement. So right now, the nature of King's Way and all of these streets is very obvious, are at very awkward angles, they're not the ideal transportation sort of grid, so sightlines and things like that, as speakers know, that are not great. By reducing sort of those traffic movements, that reduces conflict points for all pedestrians and vehicles, so those are some of the things that they're doing. In addition to that, there are conditions at Rupert Street and King's Way specifically for intersection improvements that include improved lighting, to improve visibility of the intersection for both the motorists and pedestrians and cyclists for all modes that might be going through there, as well as conditions for pedestrian signal improvements. That's an accessible pedestrian signal, so again, that improves the sort of signaling for pedestrians. Speakers spoke a little bit to, on the pedestrian side, perhaps pedestrians sort of stepping off the curb and kind of navigating that crossing in unsafe ways, but the accessible pedestrian signal will also help mitigate some of those things. So there's, some, those are some of the things, I apologize, that are kind of built into the conditions already, in addition to some of this, the comprehensive kind of suite of conditions we've already included for frontage improvements around the area. There's also kind of different avenues that we can explore. The school is a little bit out of scope of this particular project, but I will bring up that we, at the city, have a school active travel program where schools can partner with our, our transportation division and our school safety group and work together, we work together with schools to develop, you know, safe routes to school programs and identify pedestrian and basically improvements for all users to and from and around school. So that's something that the Sir Guy Carlton School can potentially take advantage of as well. I do note, it doesn't appear that they have participated in that program before. And finally, as another councillor mentioned, I don't necessarily, I don't have on record that we've received requests to explicitly evaluate this intersection, so there are other things that we can do at a more detailed level as well beyond the project.
Okay, so I don't see explicit mention of, of the timing on the, on the pedestrian crossings, but I'm assuming that that is part of what you're talking about, as far as not having explicit direction on that. Do we have any concerns about folks rat-running along school between King's Way and Rupert? Is that a thing?
So, when you say rat-running, do you refer to kind of short-cutting in a way?
Yeah, sorry, short-cutting, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that's part of the, those are kind of concerns that we know exists today, and that's, again, as one of the speaker mentioned, a result of some of the way that the intersections are configured as they, they are with sort of those easy angles to kind of get onto school avenue and avoid some of the intersections. So some of those improvements that I talked about, restricting movements, median extensions, will also help improve that short-cutting or rat-running to and from the school, from this site, particularly on this site, and then on their way to the school. So that's, that's the other function that the median extensions will serve, and some of that intersection normalization will serve, because the way the intersections are angled today is really easy for the vehicles to make those kind of swooby turns, if you will.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I'm out of time, but I appreciate your answers.
Commissioner Domenado up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. And in a similar vein, I just want to follow up one point with respect to the conditions you outlined around pedestrian safety and the intersections is, is there an opportunity, given the description around the intersection of Rupert and King's Way around enhanced signage for pedestrians, given the low visibility that was described for both drivers and pedestrians there? Is that something we could look at as well?
Yes, pardon me, certainly enhanced signage for some of those reduced visibility angles is definitely not out of realm for something like this. So again, the intersections signalized, and that's more or less kind of at, the way that it's configured, that's the highest and best at the intersection in terms of infrastructure improvements through signals, but definitely improved signage. There are things like warning signs where we place them, you know, further back to let drivers know, you know, that they're approaching a signal that might not be seen, it's a bit of like a hidden signal, that's an option. And I think, as councillor Frye mentioned, there are options through evaluating perhaps the signal timing to see if it's still appropriate for the conditions that exist today.
Thank you, I appreciate that response. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks so much. I don't see any questions to staff, so can we have somebody move the, okay, councillor Dejanova, oh, sorry, yes, Dejanova, thank you, secondor. I heard councillor Frye. So we're on the debate section now. Councillor Frye, up to five minutes for debate.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I drafted and submitted an amendment to this and have reviewed it with legal and staff.
Okay, so, okay, we have a second, I heard councillor Dejanova first, this is secondor. Did you want to speak to this councillor Frye?
... today and highlighting his sort of perspective on the intersection challenges and stuff, and I think it was very illuminating, and I also appreciate Rosemary coming on to really articulate some of how staff view this and the opportunities. So really, it's asking staff to work with the applicant and engineering to explore safety for crossings and intersection normalization at school and college streets, respectively, timed pedestrian crossing improvements on the ridge at Rupert and King's Way, and pedestrian safety improvements as necessary. And totally appreciate that staff are already well considering this. I think it just gives us a degree of comfort to know that we can add this into the approval of this, and it is lawful and doesn't give overly explicit direction, but recognizes that there's some work to be done at this particular location, and I think, and as I, as I close on this amendment, I just want to say, I think it's a fantastic-looking project. I always love that kind of, what was it, iron, iron, whatever, that triangular approach, I love it. I think those are great, it's a nice-looking approach to an otherwise moribund and incredibly boring vacant lot. So kudos to the applicant and staff for working on this, and I just want to make sure that we get that pedestrian safety piece right.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else on the queue. Clerk, we've got, we've still got some audiovisual problems. I think we're okay, because we don't really need audiovisual at the moment, so I will call a vote on this amendment. Councillor Kirby Young? There we go, thank you so much. That has passed unanimously. Thank you, council. I am going to go back to the main queue now and ask councillor Frye if anything else.
Uh, no, thank you, that's good for me, thanks.
Great. I don't see anybody else. Oh, councillor Hardwick, you have up to five minutes for debate.
Just in advance of the vote, Mayor, I just want to state, per the Vancouver Charter, vote 145.13. A member of council present at the meeting at the time of the vote who abstains from voting is deemed to have voted in the affirmative. I just wanted to state that going into the vote on the advice of the city solicitor, that when a council member determines that they have insufficient information, this is the appropriate way to vote, and I am taking this position because this application draws on the Housing Vancouver Strategy for, as precedent for the application. And after more than two years of seeking information on the underlying data on which the Housing Vancouver Strategy is based, I have insufficient information on which to base my judgments, hence I will be abstaining, but that does count as a vote in the affirmative. Thank you.
Councillor Curran, up to five.
Yes, thank you, I will be supporting. I appreciate the speaker that came especially talking about the safety of children, families, pedestrians in the area, and Pete, sorry, councillor Frye's amendment that affirmed the direction that will be taken by staff around this. I just want to note, there's a couple of things that people didn't talk about in terms of this particular application for, beyond the fact that it is in a condition of approval. We'll be meeting near zero emissions, and we did hear from the applicant that there will be an air source heat pump, which is really important because we have only to expect increasing climate events such as the heat dome of last summer, where people do need cooling in their buildings to be safe and to avoid deaths. But the other things that I liked in this project was that it would be incorporating green roof, that there is a dog play area with the site, there's a children's play area included in it as well, and that it will be protecting the water course, the old underground water course as well. So thanks to the applicant and thanks to the people who came to speak.
Thank you, councillor Curran. Councillor Kirby Young, up to five.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I will be brief, and Sam, voting in support of this application, almost every day now, it seems like we're hearing about a new study from either federally or provincially that says that housing is the number one priority for people and that we are behind pace in delivering the amount of needed housing for our population, and rental is where a significant need is, and we talk often about our historically low vacancy rate in the city of Vancouver. And this will deliver 127 new units, so I'm pleased to see that. Would also note that the, it's interesting, it does kind of remind me of the Flatiron Building in New York. Sometimes some of the constrained sites actually make for interesting building designs that can add to kind of the unique fabric of the city. And the other thing that I will say is that I did really appreciate the speaker that we had that spoke to the importance of traffic signals. I do think that we need to work towards delivering these in conjunction with the developments. Oftentimes, they come after, it's a little bit of cart and horse, but clearly, this is an area that's become busier and busier, and there are some significant and real safety concerns here, which is really important for anybody, as we want people to be able to get out more, when we have wider sidewalks, use the public realm, trying to build complete communities, but they need to be safe doing that, and especially when you're talking about dealing with kids. So I am really happy to support it for that reason, and I also appreciate the amendment from councillor Frye, which otherwise I would have put something similar, but obviously, given I don't have the full brain power tonight, because I'm a little under the weather, I appreciate that he did the heavy lifting on that one, but I'm happy to support the application. Thank you.
Thanks. That is it for comments from council, so I'll call the vote on this. And that has passed with none in opposition. Hey, thanks, council. We're on to the third item. Just going to be a long one. We have 245 speakers lined up for this one. I calculate that if every speaker took five minutes without questions, that'd be about 20 hours. 20 hours of hearing. If we do have questions, of course, which is the right of councillors to do, we could add double that time potentially. So, so no need to rush here, we'll, we'll go through the presentation from staff and proceed on this one. So just, I will also, as we go through the speakers list, I will refresh, I will go through the, you know, the kind of parameters of speaking to council frequently, just to remind folks about the rules in this quasi judicial hearing. And that's, we'll proceed. So right now, we have the CD1 rezoning on 2098 West 7th and 2091 West 8th. And we have a lot of speakers, so we're going to first ask if anyone has a conflict of interest, let us know if you do. Otherwise, we'll have the clerk read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by the Vancouver Affordable Housing Agency to rezone 2086 to 2098 West 7th Avenue and 2091 West 8th Avenue from RM4 Residential District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a 13-story residential building containing 129 social housing units. A building height of 47.1 meters and a floor space ratio of 4.4 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing. 447 pieces of correspondence in support, 1,076 pieces of correspondence in opposition, and that also includes one electronic petition with 1,422 signatures, and 14 pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application, and that's up until 4:00 PM today.
Great, thank you so much. Anybody who wants to speak to this, number is 1-833-3538, 610 code 1061445 pound. We will be, I will be calling the numbers and names of speakers, we'll be tweeting that out as well, just to keep folks on track as to where we are in the speakers list. Again, it's almost eight o'clock tonight, we will probably end at 10:00, so I don't expect we'd get through more than 30 or 40 folks tonight. So just to kind of, I'll try, we'll try to keep some kind of accurate count so we can just let people go on with their days while participating. At the same time, we have Chi Chan from the rezoning planner here to present to us. Thanks for coming, and please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Chi Chan. I am the rezoning planner for this social housing application, which is being considered under the city's affordable housing policies. The site shown in red in the middle of the slide is a full block along Arbutus Street between West 7th and West 8th avenues. The property and surrounding residential neighborhood are zoned RM4 residential district. Broadway to the south is zone C3A for higher density mixed use. Zooming in, the St. Augustine Independent School is across the street to the west. The future bus loop in Arbutus subway station is to the south, the Greenways directly to the east, and Delamont Park is to the north. The site is well-served by frequent transit service, located a short walk from the number 99 and the number nine bus stops, and in the future, the Arbutus subway station. The east-west off-Broadway bike route and the Arbutus Greenway bike route are directly adjacent to the site. There are grocery stores, pharmacies, shops, and services along Broadway, as well as along West 4th Avenue. The Kids Community Centre is about 900 meters to the southwest. The site is being considered under the council-adopted citywide affordable housing policies, which has the objective to maintain and expand housing opportunities for low and moderate-income individuals households, and to distribute housing across residential neighborhoods in Vancouver, rather than concentrating them in a few areas. Councils have supported rezoning proposals through this policy to facilitate the delivery of social housing in areas across the city without a local rezoning policy. In 2017, council approved the Housing Vancouver Strategy, which identifies the need to coordinate action with senior governments, nonprofit, and Indigenous partners to deliver housing for the lowest-income households. The strategy also identifies the need to create new, purpose-built, self-contained social and supportive housing in all neighborhoods across the city. As a city of reconciliation, the city commits to form a sustained relationship of mutual respect and understanding with local First Nations and the urban Indigenous community. The proposed project will be for people experiencing homelessness and low-income individuals, who include a disproportionate amount of people who are Indigenous. Council adopted the inequity framework in July 2021 that provides guidance on embedding equity into our work, both internally and externally. Equity addresses systemic inequities that benefit and favor some groups, and often disproportionately impacts Indigenous, Black, people of color, and cultural communities. Through policy and regulation, the city can work with partners to reduce the systemic barriers to housing and prioritize accessible, safe housing for marginalized groups that experience housing instability. When this application was submitted in October 2021, it was allowed to proceed under the Broadway interim rezoning policy, which permitted rezoning applications for social and supportive housing to proceed while the Broadway planning program was underway. On June 22 of this year, council adopted the Broadway Plan. While this application is allowed to proceed under the Broadway Plan's IRP, it also generally aligns with the adopted plan's policies. This table shows the stock of purpose-built supportive housing that exists in Vancouver in 2022. There are approximately 720 units of temporary modular housing in 11 buildings. These buildings were deployed in only a temporary capacity by BC Housing and will be on-site for five to 10 years. They're newer buildings, which open between 2018 and 2021. There are an additional 3,000 units in 55 purpose-built supportive housing buildings across this city. These are self-contained homes with supports providing lasting, stable housing for residents. The average age of these buildings is about 20 years, and the buildings range in size from nine to 154 units, with the median building size being approximately 80 units. The city has a long track record of working collaboratively with senior governments on tackling the housing and homelessness crisis. This map shows where partnerships have resulted in new, purpose-built supportive homes across the city since 2010, in both temporary and permanent capacities. In the summer of 2020, the city, province, and federal government signed the most recent memorandum of understanding that commits to delivering a minimum of 300 purpose-built, self-contained, permanent supportive homes under, using modular construction methods under the Permanent Modular Supporting Housing Initiative, otherwise known as PEMSHI. This application is one of those sites that would be delivered under this initiative. Housing Vancouver Strategy is to partner with senior levels of government to add 4,100 new social housing units with supports to be rented at the shelter component of income assistance by 2027. As of March 31 of this year, 769 of those have been approved. Note that, as previously mentioned, approximately 720 of them are temporary modular housing. These numbers also don't include an additional 109 units just approved by this council on June 14th on a similar permanent supportive proposal at King Ed and Knight Street on the east side of the city. The demand for this type of housing remains high, as evidenced by the more than 2,000 people experiencing homelessness, according to the 2020 Metro Van Homeless Count. Projects like the one presented here this evening are an important step towards achieving our Housing Vancouver target to create pathways out of homelessness. Supportive housing buildings have 24/7 staff embedded in the building to provide onsite support services for the residents. This slide shows a range of services that may ultimately be provided at this location by both the nonprofit operator, in-reach services by community partners, or by Vancouver Coastal Health. Building operations, programs, and services are finalized at the development permit stage if the rezoning is approved. The services are funded by BC Housing and provided by nonprofit operators. These programs and services may change and adapt over time as residents and the community needs change. This application was submitted on October 4, 2021. It proposes a 13-story passive house-certified residential building constructed using modular construction techniques. The tower is situated on the south end of the site next to the future Arbutus Sky Subway Station and Bus Loop. There is a three-story podium on the north side of the site to transition to the surrounding neighborhood. Please note, Council, the renderings and plans before you, that you are seeing in this presentation and in the report illustrate what the design development conditions contained in the staff report could result in. I will explain this further on. So for this application, a building height of 155 feet and an FSR of 4.4 are recommended, includes 129 social housing units with supports. All units are rental studio units, as they are for individuals, because this is where the greatest need is for those experiencing homelessness. Adult family members who desire to be together could be accommodated in the same building, and each have their own secured rental home. This project will create approximately 70 direct Canadian construction jobs. Approximately 50% of the units would rent at the shelter component of income assistance. In BC, this rate continues to be $375 per month for an individual. The balance of the units would rent at rents geared to income, or RGI, and tenants would pay 30% of their annual income for rent. These rents can range from approximately $375 up to a maximum of $719 per month upon initial teneting in 2022 values. They would serve individuals with an annual income ranging from $15,000 to $28,750. Flexibility is provided that so that if an RGI tenant, resident's income increases, they would not need to relocate as long as their annual income does not exceed the maximum BC Hills. These rental rates would be secured through a housing agreement and Section 219 covenant registered on title that prohibits the stratification and separate sale of units. Staff support this affordability mix, as it aligns with the intent of the MOU and provides homes for very low-income residents who are able to live more independently. It also enables operators to offer a greater diversity of housing and meet the needs of very low-income tenants as they may change. The applicant hosted pre-application engagement events in spring 2021, which included neighborhood dialogue sessions, community walkabouts, stakeholder meetings, and an online comment period. Following the submission of the rezoning application, the city hosted a virtual open house between November 1st and 21st of 2021. A total of 1,526 submissions were received during the city's public comment period. During this period, support was expressed for social housing and for the building's height, density, and massing next to the future subway station. Concerns were expressed related to the location, scale, safety, support services, family housing, and the engagement process. Following the end of the comment period earlier this year, staff continued to receive email correspondence regarding the application. Approximately 150 pieces of additional correspondence was received, containing both questions and comments regarding the application. The comments express themes that are similar to those that you see on the slide here. Staff also met with stakeholder groups during the application review process to answer questions and hear concerns. There were four meetings with the Independent School, and separate meetings with the parish, the BIAs, and the Sancta Maria House representatives. So regarding concerns about the suitability of this location, there are no land use restrictions for the citing of residential uses for low-income residents in city policies. The site is also situated next to a future transit station, it provides excellent access to services and amenities across the city, is within walking and biking distance of numerous amenities in the neighborhood, including grocery stores, pharmacies, parks, a community centre, and other services. For these same reasons, the building scale is supported, and it is in line with building heights permitted under the Broadway Plan. The tower, as I previously mentioned, is positioned on the southern portion of the site to eliminate any shadowing on Delamont Park to the north between the equinoxes, while the lower three-story podium helps to transition the building into the surrounding neighborhood. Nonetheless, after receiving public feedback and completing UDP and staff reviews, further design development conditions have been included in the staff report to address scale, to minimize shadow impacts on the building on the St. Augustine Independent Schoolyard, and to provide a facade that is more responsive to the surrounding residential neighborhood. The original application is shown on the left, while an illustration of what those design development conditions could result in is shown on the right. Notably, in addition to the change in facade materials, the tall metal parapet would be removed from the top of the building to reduce its visual height. Conditions also require reduction in the tower floor plate from 7,200 to 6,800 square feet by the removal of one column, or 11 units, from the tower to make it slightly more slender and closer to tower floor plates that are more typical of rental buildings across the city. Other recommended changes include increasing building setbacks along West 7th and 8th avenues for more space for landscape on the property. These increased setbacks will result in an improved public realm and pedestrian experience by softening the building edge along both 7th and 8th avenues. Detailed shadow studies on the St. Augustine private schoolyard, outlined in red, were analyzed by staff and made available to the public at various times of day for most months of the year. As can be seen in the shadow studies here, the proposal's shadow completely leaves the schoolyard by approximately 11:40 AM at the September equinox. Furthermore, the recommended reduction in the tower floor plate I previously mentioned can strategically be taken from the southwest corner of the building. This would result in a marginal improvement to solar access on the schoolyard. The revision, this revision to the building form demonstrates a design response to the intent of council's amendment to the Broadway Plan to minimize shadowing on independent schoolyards. Staff support this application, together with the design conditions in the staff report, as they improve the overall urban design and solar access of the, of the proposal, on balance with the delivery of much-needed, secure, deeply affordable rental housing in a transit-supported location. Regarding expressed safety concerns, studies and research show that communities and cities benefit on financial, social, and equity objectives by providing people who are experiencing homelessness with homes and supports. With regards to the support services, there are services proposed to be offered in the building, and residents can access services in the community. The specific details of services provided within the building will be established closer to occupancy and determined based on the needs of future residents. Regarding the preference for family housing, as previously mentioned, adult couples and intergenerational family members could live in the proposed building. Each person would be provided with their own secured unit. On the engagement process, the feedback received during the pre-app consultation phase was submitted to the city by BC Housing and was reviewed as part of the application review process. Feedback received during the rezoning application process was also considered, along with the comments from UDP and the staff review, and has resulted in the design development requirements presented this evening and in the staff report. While staff acknowledged the neighborhood's expressed concerns on the form of development and the future residents, the goal of optimizing opportunities to deliver deeply affordable housing close to transit, the proposed target tenant group, and ongoing concern for people experiencing homelessness resulted in the support for the proposed application before you here today. In conclusion, this proposal can be considered under the affordable housing policies and advances the city's supportive and supportive housing policy goals and key equity and reconciliation commitments. The proposal and recommended form of development represent an appropriate urban design response to the site in context. Staff support this application, subject to the conditions contained in Appendix B. The planning team, Housing and Homelessness Services team from ACCS, BC Housing staff, and the operator are here and available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thanks so much. So do we have the applicant team here? Pretty good, all set up here?
Just getting set up, yes, thank you.
My name is Heather Oland and I am the Director of Non-Market Housing Development for the City of Vancouver. On behalf of the applicant team, we would like to thank you for your consideration of the proposal to develop 129 social housing homes with supports on the city site located at 2086 to 2098 West 7th Avenue and 2091 West 8th Avenue. The Non-Market Housing Development Team plays an important role in achieving the Housing Vancouver Goals for the development of social housing on this and other city sites. Our small but nimble team readies city sites for development of new social housing. This includes the identification of sites suitable for residential development in the city's existing real estate portfolios, as well as acquisition of new sites. Once sites are identified, we conduct pre-development activities to assess potential development risks, for example its grade, environmental status, as well as geotechnical density and servicing capacity. In this case, the West 7th and 8th site was already owned by the city and is considered appropriate for residential development from a technical perspective. We also work to ensure partnerships with senior government and funders so that social housing projects are affordable to the residents of Vancouver and are financially sustainable over the long term. This includes capital funding and, in some cases, ongoing operational subsidies to keep rents affordable. For this project, we had early support from both B.C. Housing and CMHC to advance this site to this milestone, and we are grateful for their partnership. We foster partnerships with nonprofit housing operators and service providers like the MPA Society, who will operate the proposed building once it's completed. Their input into the design and programming is essential so that social housing located on city sites provides safe, secure, and affordable housing for the people of Vancouver. Finally, we assist our partners through the regulatory submissions, such as rezoning applications, and provide development management support in an effort to streamline and expedite the delivery of homes in our city. On the screen, you will see a couple of examples of the many social housing developments we have helped to deliver with B.C. Housing and CMHC, including Hummingbird Place at West First Avenue with PHS Community Services, and the future development of 1190 Burrard with the Community Land Trust and Community. I am pleased to introduce James Forsyth, the Director of Regional Development Lower Mainland with B.C. Housing, who will be presenting the details of tonight's proposal.
Thank you, your worship, councillors, staff, members of the public. I am James Forsyth, your Director of Regional Development at B.C. Housing. And I'd like to acknowledge the traditional and unceded territories of the Musqueam,
A public safe injection site. This building is going to have medical care rooms for the people living in the building. It's going to have programs so people can connect to their cultures, skills training, mental health services. These are all part of supportive housing and the wraparound services. And we know that supportive housing works. It's a solution that works to break the cycle of homelessness. We have heard in the past, and I'm sure we're going to hear over the course of the next several nights, that people are concerned about the challenges in their neighborhood. I want to be very clear. Supportive housing is not the cause of those problems. It's the solution to those problems. We see that people living in supportive housing, they gain stability, they see improvements in their overall well-being and in their physical health, and most importantly, they're better to, they're better able to integrate and contribute to their neighborhood and community. I wish I could take credit for the successes of supportive housing. However, in this project, MPA deserves so much credit. The society brings on-the-ground expertise and delivers housing and works with vulnerable populations, and they have the track record to prove it. MPA started in Kitsellano. They've been part of this community for a very long time, and I want to acknowledge the past generations of neighbors who have worked with MPA and have supported them over the years. And it's that spirit of Kitsellano neighborhoodliness that is needed for the future. And lastly, I want to emphasize how we actually got here. Community input engagement is critical to our success. We've met with neighbors and with stakeholders before we even submitted an application for rezoning. Listening, truly listening to the community is key to understanding the challenges. It allows us to proactively create solutions, but it doesn't actually stop there. Once our application was submitted, we continued to receive valuable feedback and engage with the community and have fulsome conversations and receive commentary from both the public and also staff. It allowed us to iterate and to update the design, to address nuances, to refine, and to create the project that's before you today. My final point is that I want to note that our public input process does not end with the public hearing. The process that I have on the screen here may look linear, but in truth, each step has its own little feedback loop for refinement, and our future relationships with the neighborhood will be key to the ongoing success of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes... Okay, thanks for the comments from the applicant presentation. Now, counsel, we can move to questions. We have a number of counselors on the queue, and at this point, you can ask questions to staff or the applicant team. Counselor Dejanova, you're up first, up to five minutes.
Thanks. My first question's for BC Housing, and it's actually, actually, I'll ask my first question for, of, no, I'll ask the first question, BC Housing. On page 16 of our referral report dated May 3rd, under onsite support services, it states, and it was alluded to by our staff also, "The level of services provided in the building will be established when the building is being tenanted and determined based on the needs of the future tenants." I'm wondering if since the referral report to date, has BC Housing and MPA committed or planned a specific amount of supports and/or ratio of support staff to the tenants for the supportive units? And if so, what are those numbers? That's for BC Housing.
Applicant team?
And maybe, Mayor, I'll just move a second round, just in case.
Sure.
I'm hoping we won't need it.
Do we have a second or for a second round? Thank you, Counselor Dominado. All in favor, yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay. Okay, over to staff, thanks.
Thank you. Celine Moblis, Managing Director of Housing and Homelessness Services, I might just take the first pass. As was mentioned in the, in the presentation and the report, at this stage, we're just looking at the form of development. Those operational issues, the operating agreement, all of those pieces will come together closer to the development permit stage, at which point we have an operations management plan, and there are more details that will be shared with community and with members of council.
Thanks. Could I hear from BC Housing if there's any plans for that right now on a ratio of a number of support staff to tenants in the supportive units?
Heidi Hartman, BC Housing. And to that question, we are in negotiations. At the point in time that the operation model is negotiated with, closer to the point in time of housing opening, that is when we'd be able to answer that question.
So right now, there's, there's no assurances of any?
We have basic frameworks of two-staff 24/7 on any supportive housing site, and we increase the number of staff based on the unit count.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. My next question's for city staff. Can council require a certain level of service be provided from the nonprofit or, and/or BC Housing as a subject or clause in our housing agreement? And I know we typically have a housing agreement always on, on a, on application like this as it moves forward.
Chi Chan, rezoning planner, thank you for the question, counselor. I'm going to direct that to Celine Moblis again of ACCS.
Hi, thank you. The housing agreement typically secures affordability and the tenure, so it's not a typical vehicle that we would look to do that, but through...
Could we, is my question. Could we? Could council do that? Is it within our parameters?
I think the, the basic terms through the rezoning conditions that are here, it's more about form development and securing tenure. We, it could be something that could be explored potentially through a future lease or, or other agreements that would be signed as part of the project. The housing agreements typically focus on tenure and level of affordability.
Is there any reason we couldn't amend, make an amendment or a clause subject to adding something to the housing agreement as part of the approval?
If, maybe I could refer that to someone from legal services if we have a lawyer on the line?
We just want to, perhaps Counselor Dejanova will, will have the legal team look at that if they're not prepared.
Okay, maybe, maybe I'll ask one more quick question.
Yeah, please do.
See if I can get it in. There's been some comments about who may live in the building, but my question is, is there any, has there been any considerations after meeting with community as to who could not live in the building? For instance, tenants that had a history of violence? I'm wondering if that was a consideration at all, and I'm not sure who that question should be directed to. I'll allow staff to, to decide.
Thank you for the question. Just give us a moment. Allison Dunnett will respond to that.
Thank you, Allison Dunnett, Senior Planner, SROs in Supportive Housing Team, Housing and Homelessness Services. No, there hasn't been any discussion of people that would be barred from the building or not included in the building based on housing being a human rights access issue.
Thanks so much. I'll go back on just to see if we can get legal on for the last question.
Sure, maybe your second round, the legal team will have a response for you there. Counselor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to start with questions in the first round to some of the applicant individuals. I'd like to address a question to Nick Blackman from MPA Society, and that is really specifically, as it was identified in the presentation, that you are to operate the building, and looking at some of the facilities you operate currently, ranging from Duke House, for example, group homes, some outreach services where you provide day hours into hotels, and then you have some other, like Sanford Apartments, 46 units. Do you have, or have you operated anything at this scale and this number of units before?
Thank you for your question, counselor. Nick Blackman, Executive Director at MPA Society. Just to correct you, Sanford Apartments has 62 units. I think you referred to it as 46, so just want to have that on the record. And at this time, no, MPA has not operated a building this size or for the proposed size of this building. Thank you.
Okay. And then in terms of, sorry, don't go away, Nick. A little question to you on that one, if I can. What would be important to you as the operator in terms of the amount of resources provided
I think for our programs that we operate, the safety and security of our staff, our members, our visitors, and our communities is a priority. Those are all the, always things that we look at before, during, and presently when we operate our programs.
And what, what are the factors that would help to achieve that, from your perspective?
Definitely the staffing ratio that would be involved. It's hard to discuss that right now because we're not sure exactly on the program or the operational agreement. We would look at the referral process on the histories of people coming into the program and how we assess that for the program that we're operating in relation to the staff that we have working in the program and the types of staff that we have and the services available.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm just going to switch gears to a second question, and that is with respects to wondering if there's any...
Counselor, just, just to clarify on a couple of those questions there, with respect to MPA's operations of the site. MPA, they certainly have operated this sort of scale before. They're currently operating a larva modular, 98 units. And then also, in terms of the things that we need to get to operate the housing...
I appreciate, I appreciate additional information, but I do actually have limited time, and so it's really helpful if I can just, my questions, but thank you. So switching gears, I'm wondering, given we see increasing need for medical services and supports, and we see the advocacy from the mayor's council, for example, for complex care, rather than continuing to build these services that have, or these developments that just have limited services on-site, such as room, sort of substance use rooms or whatever the case is, was there any consideration given to having medical facilities located directly on-site and taking this as an opportunity to improve the offerings to residents that need those services?
Thank you, counsel, for the question. I'm going to direct that to Celine Moblis.
Thank you, Celine Moblis, Managing Director of Housing and Homelessness Services. No, this isn't a, a medical model of, of a building. As mentioned, I think in the presentation, there are a number of spaces within the building to ensure that there are supports, and again, as the building is occupied, those programs are developed. Obviously, there's partnership with Vancouver Coastal Health, looking to see what other supports might be needed to be brought into the building or accessed in the community by tenants.
But we're not, we're not designing it for a different type of medical approach. Okay. The next question that I have, and this goes more to staff really around the development, there's pretty substantive conditions in the appendices that are listed here. It speaks, for example, about how narrow the site is at 75 feet and the roadway alignment, how there's some of the design was done with things like trees and benches on public way, that the road alignment itself is, or the driveway is problematic, and that needs to be changed. I'm wondering why this is coming forward with such substantive conditions, and those weren't worked out ahead of time.
Thank you for the question, counselor. I'm going to direct that to Derek Robinson, Urban Design.
Thanks for the question, Counselor Derek Robinson, from the Development Planner. Yeah, so that is correct. There are some substantive conditions regarding the public realm interface and regarding the expression of the tower form. However, these are typical issues that we would be able to address through a fulsome development permit process should council approve this rezoning. However, because there were a number of conditions, that is one of the reasons that the applicant did provide this exploratory study, which was provided to council in the report for your benefit, to see how some of those conditions could be addressed moving forward. And so, through that information, through that information, we're comfortable that we can address it through a DP process.
Thanks. Counselor Boyle, up to five minutes.
Great, thanks so much. My first question is just a quick one to staff, just to clarify. I think I heard you say that the design changes made to the built form resulted in losing 11 units of housing in this building?
Thank you, counselor, for the question. Chi Chan, rezoning planner, that is correct.
Those were fully funded homes from BC Housing that got taken out of the proposal to make those design changes based on neighbor feedback? Just, just clarifying that that's true?
They improved the urban design performance of the building, reduced shadowing on the independent schoolyard, and brought the tower form more in line with what we would typically see for a rental tower across the city. This is on balance with the loss of 11 units.
Of ongoing housing for people who are homeless. My next question is to the, the operator, or a number of questions probably to the operator, which is I'm wondering if you can speak to the other buildings that you operate, what your relationship with the neighbors are, impacts to the neighbors, those sorts
Thank you for your question, counselor. Nick Blackman, MPA Society. We take pride in our, our community outreach and our, our relationships with our neighbors. We can go back to Sanford Apartments and our resource center that was actually created and built just over 10 years ago in the heart of Kitsellano at Seventh and Fur, where we went through an extensive community consultation process with community advisory committees and has been extremely successful up to present date in ensuring we listen to our neighbors and our communities and for us to educate them on the services that we provide. Thank you.
Okay, appreciate that. And do you have numbers? A couple more questions for the operator, if you don't mind. Do you have numbers about concerns from neighbors, calls to police in the neighborhood, shifting any, any of those sorts of statistics that reflect that neighbor experience?
I don't have any of those numbers with me, no.
Okay. And are there other lessons that you've learned from those buildings that you're putting in place in this or that might be relevant for us to know as one of the decision-making bodies here?
I think what, what is key in the past that's led to success in creating new programs is the relationships that we have with our communities, whether they be on advisory committees or in open houses or, you know, various other ways of communications. It's about being open and honest regarding the programs we provide and providing education regarding mental health, substance use and supportive housing and what those really mean, and to try and demystify and, you know, help people understand the, the programs that we provide, and more importantly, who we provide them for and the, and the supports that are provided to give people the best chance at living a meaningful life.
Okay. Thank you for that. One last question. Can you just remind me, I think I read this somewhere, but how long you've been operating supportive housing buildings in the Kits neighborhood?
Essentially for 51 years.
Thank you so much for those answers. I have a couple of quick questions for BC Housing as well. I'm, I'm wondering if you could tell us what happens, what would happen to this funding if this proposal were rejected? Is it sort of held for us to put towards a different building, or is it just lost for now?
Thank you, Counselor James Forsythe, BC Housing. So this project is being funded both in partnership with the provincial government and the federal government. For BC Housing, it's under our Supportive Housing Fund, and this is probably one of our most precious funding programs, and there is a need across the entire province. If this project is rejected, we need to redeploy that funding to, to another project and address the, the needs that are out there in the province. So this is a fantastic opportunity. The key with this program, having both the capital funding and also the operating on a long-term basis, helps to create those permanent housing solutions that we need.
Thanks so much. We're going to move to Counselor, Counselor Swanson, up to five, please.
Yeah, thanks so much for the presentations. I have three questions. I just want to start by saying that I do have a really open mind on this issue, and I'm open to being persuaded, so I'm listening very intently. Can, first question is to BC Housing, can we get copies of your slides?
We can make sure you get that, Counselor Swanson.
Thank you. Second one is, would people who are, who don't have homes in, who are in the Kits area get preference for moving into this building?
Thank you, Counselor Swanson, for the question. Celine Moblis will respond to that.
Celine Moblis, Managing Director of Housing and Homelessness Services. Yes, as with any supportive housing project that we open, we work closely with BC Housing, our outreach staff. We do a lot of canvassing in the neighborhood. There's a Kits shower program that, that currently exists, and when we opened other supportive housing projects in the neighborhood, we would look to do outreach and ensure that folks from the local community are prioritized for that housing.
So if this building opened, we could hopefully see homelessness in the Kits neighborhood reduced?
Correct, yes. And, and as well as meeting a diverse housing needs with some deeply affordable housing.
Okay, thanks. And a question for MPA. What do you say to the theory that it's not good to house people with mental health issues together with each other and that they should be housed separately with people that don't have, those, that homeless people shouldn't be housed together, they should, they should be housed? I guess if you house them, they're not homeless, but you shouldn't put them all together. Do you have a response to that theory?
Thank you for your question, counselor. Nick Blackman, MPA Society. I would suggest that MPA has been, been providing these services for 51 years, and we've been extremely successful in supporting people on their own path to recovery from mental health and substance use issues. Thank you.
So I know that, because I know what your reputation is. Some folks, there is this theory out there that we've been getting emails about that says you shouldn't put people, a whole bunch of people that have mental health issues together in the same building. I'm just wondering if you have a reaction to that theory?
My reaction is that we are people supporting people, and these are the services and supports that MPA has been contracted to provide, and if they are smaller group homes in the community or bigger supportive apartments, we, again, or repeat, we've achieved a lot of success in these programs and feel it creates community within those programs. So we can create a home within a home for members who, say, are experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness in the community.
Okay, so kind of a community within the building. Yeah, thank you so much. That's all for me.
Thanks. Counselor Frye to staff or the applicant?
Yeah, I'm, given that we'll have a second round, I'm going to focus these questions for James Forsythe at BC Housing, please. Hi, James. And folks, just, you know, obviously recognizing that we've been getting a lot of correspondence on this stuff, so we have lots of questions and, and, but I'm hoping, first off, James, you can tell us about what specific profile of supportive teneting and assessment of appropriate tenants will be going into this.
Celine Moblis here, maybe I'll just take a start at that. I think we need to recognize it's the unique needs of the tenants, and there's a thoughtful process that goes on, again, prioritizing people from the local neighborhood. I really think the, the important thing is to focus on the form of development and where we are here at this process. Those operational issues will come at a, at a, at a future time, and it's a, a process is done very closely with BC Housing, with the operator, with city staff.
Okay, but respecting the, the proximity to immediate neighbors, and, and those are factors in us making this decision, recognizing this is a very specific type of development and the proximity to, obviously, the elementary school, Delmont Park, the Sancta Maria housing. We, we do have legitimate questions around, around what that teneting assessment's going to look like and...
I guess I would say that the safety of community, everyone in community, including people that would be living in this housing as well as neighboring residents, are a priority. We have over 3,000 supportive housing sites across the city, many of which are located beside a school. And again, should, should council approve this project and it perceive fully occupied, the, the intent is to ensure that that project is well-integrated into community, the operator working with neighbors shouldn't issue a rise. There's a quick response of all partners, we're coming together to address those issues. We have opportunities like community advisory committees and, and other structures to respond to any issues should they arise.
I'm just going to stop you there, Counselor Frye, for a second, because this has come up a number of times. Is the actual scope of the decision we're making, and I'll bring your clock back on, but just as a procedural point, I'm wondering if staff can just, because we have a lot of speakers coming, we have two rounds of questions here, I'm just wondering if planning staff can just remind us about the scope of the decision we're making here tonight? What is it that really is within the parameters of what we're considering, and then what comes at later stages?
If I could just add a sidebar to that, just because the segue from, from Celine's comments was also because I, I wanted to ask about how conditions were applied in the case of the Reederman residence, which was adjacent to Sir Wilfrid Laurier, was the Marple TMH, and they had an advisory committee with Sir Laurier School had a seat on that.
Can I let you ask that as a separate question? So if we can just have the kind of broad parameters of rezonings in, in general, then, Counselor Frye, I'll come back to you with your additional questions about more specifics.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Yardah McNeil, Senior Assistant Director Planning for the rezoning center. So the decision tonight is to adopt a bylaw, a bylaw that permits a building to move on to a DP stage. So you're adopting an FSR, a height, a use. Essentially, the conditions contained in the report are, are to be satisfied prior to enactment of that bylaw or, or follow through onto the DP stage, which is you've got a combination of both in the context of that. The particulars around the agreements are something that will be worked out through the enactment process, and I think you've heard that same comment to date from city staff and from BC Housing and the operator.
Okay, thanks. That's the broad parameters. Sorry to interrupt you, Counselor Frye, I just think, again, we've missed a long one.
Follow-up point of procedure, Mayor, if I might? Counselor Kirby Young?
Sure. Counselor Kirby Young, go ahead.
Yeah, just for clarity, just to understand kind of the rules and the parameters to your, the question that you just asked and the clarification. If we're supposed to retaining our, restraining ourselves to the form of development, can you clarify why we have the applicant MPA here that's speaking to operations? So why is it, why is that acceptable for that to be part of the applicant presentation but not for council to ask a question about operations? I'm, I'm a bit confused, I'm not clear.
I think that'd be good to clarify as to why, Counselor Kirby Young, so perhaps staff can give us a sense of, of just, so some of the information seems, that we've received seems outside of, you know, we would normally receive at a, at a rezoning hearing. So I'm just wondering if staff have an explanation for council on that? Thank you for the question, Chi Chan, rezoning planner. So as, as discussed several times tonight, we're talking about form of development, FSR, height. The operators here in BC Housing is here to, to support what could be happening and the, the finer details that will be discussed should this rezoning application be approved. Those details are normally handled at the DP stage. Yeah, those details are handled at the DP stage, but the applicant, the operators here to sort of, they can talk in general about their experience and to, to provide some of the information of what could be coming down the line, and that's why they're here. Okay, so, so the, yeah, just one second, Counselor Kirby Young. So just to clarify, BC Housing has a broad applicant team that's here to, to answer questions, but really, my job as chair to make sure that we stay in parameters, and so I'll try to do that, and then come back to you, Counselor Kirby Young, for a follow-up procedural question.
Yes, thank you very much. My follow-up procedural question, then, and I would welcome if the mayor feels we need to get a legal response on this, that if staff are able to introduce the applicant to speak in general terms around the nature of operations and things of that nature that might be impactful, is it not then fair game for council to be asked in similar questions in general terms? Otherwise, I would say that this is a, an kind of unfairly cited proposal, and I would really welcome legal's perspective on that.
We've got the director of planning here at the mic, so we'll listen to Teresa O'Donnell first.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. This is Teresa O'Donnell, the Director of PDS. I'd like to maybe try a stab at this a little bit. We, and Celine and Allison can certainly add more color to this if you'd like, but what we did, I, I think it's appropriate to talk in general terms because of the amount and the type of feedback that we've gotten from the public on this. However, both the lease agreement and the housing agreement are separate agreements that contain those details, and those will come to council. And I think that's probably the time that's more appropriate to work those details out, but we can talk in general terms. Have I captured that okay?
Counselor Kirby Young, did you, or...
Yes, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
So I guess there will be other decisions down the line. This is the form of development today, and then there'll be separate council decisions down the line if this is approved today. This is the form of development today, and then there'll be separate council decisions down the line if this is approved today. Any other, just while we're here, I know Counselor Frye, you have more in depth. Did you have a procedural question or did you?
I do have a procedural question. You're saying there is a separate decision-making process for council down the line, or there could be? Because.
Maybe we could ask staff again about the series of decisions that are surrounding this project. We have had clarification on what the rezoning is today, but what future decisions I think are guaranteed and which ones are possible.
Services. There will be a lease that will come back to council for a decision. And if I could just comment, I think we're trying to strike a balance. We recognize there are a lot of questions around operations. It's very difficult at this stage to give definitive answers. As we've mentioned, as we kind of move through this process and it becomes, we move closer to the operating agreement that the BC Housing enters into with the applicant, some of those details will become more apparent. There's an operations management plan that is developed out of that as a condition of the development permit, which we will share publicly and with council. And so as those details become more apparent, we'll be able to provide more fulsome information. I think at this point, we're trying to strike a balance between a basic overview of supportive housing and the importance of it, recognizing that we don't have the granular details of what that exactly will look like when we get to occupancy should council approve this rezoning application.
Counselor Frye, are you satisfied with that?
Yeah.
Okay, just while I'm here, anybody else have any other procedural questions you'd like to ask? I mean, you're of course free to ask them at any time. But since we're on it right now, maybe we could continue. Counselor Carr, I'll just turn your mic on for a procedural question.
Great, thank you. Apropos of the discussion we're now having, Mayor. At the point of the discussion that comes to council around the conditions of operations, will the public have a chance to speak to those as opposed to it being in camera?
We will be seeking input as part of the development permit process on the operations management plan. But as with, but so we will, that will be open for comment, and we'll reflect that in that plan. But I would just, I guess, caution in terms of, I think, the teneting, the decisions around those pieces, that is really a decision between BC Housing and the operator as part of their teneting and their operating model as we move forward. But there will be more information made available through the operations management plan.
So follow-up, so apropos of that, if that is an agreement, as you say, between the operator and BC Housing, what is the role of council in terms of reviewing that? I mean, are we just informed about it, or is there a chance to influence it?
I think council is informed, even as staff. We don't get actively engaged in tenant selection. That is really, ultimately, the MPA will be the landlord of the site, and they make the ultimate decision of who is moving into their building and manage those tenancies according to our Residential Tenancy Act and the rights and the privacies that those tenants have to their housing.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, we have had a number of questions that seem that they may, it might be useful to have just some advice from the legal team, just again, to clarify for council and the public as to both the parameters of this rezoning, which I think the Director of Planning has described very well, but subsequent decisions and the role of council and the public. That would be, so perhaps when staff have those ready, I can interrupt proceedings if you'd like to offer any additional explanation. But with that, I think I'm ready to start back up with Counselor Frye and continue on with your first round of questions.
Procedural stuff that was helpful, but also confusing, and I'm sure for the audience as well. I do want to just go back in time a little bit, because the only context I could find with modular housing, supportive modular housing this close to a school was the Reederman residences, which was around and about Churchill and Sir Wilfrid Laurier Elementary. And I understand that a condition of approval for the issuance of a development permit included the formation of an advisory committee that would include Sir Wilfrid Laurier PAC on said advisory committee. I'm wondering where that comes about in this process? Is that something that we can add as a?
Thank you, Counselor. Alison Dunnett, Housing and Homelessness Services. A community advisory committee is often and almost always created for a supportive housing building. This is led by the nonprofit operator. We'll have city staff, BC Housing staff, and a selection of community members on that. It is usually put in place just prior to the building opening, and is used as a vehicle to really address any concerns or questions, build connection with community. The Reiderman Residence Project that you're speaking about had a community advisory committee. Because there were schools adjacent, whenever there's schools adjacent, we make that offer if the school would like to put someone forward to participate. So members of the Parents Advisory Council were interested, and they participated on that CAC, which is very common, as well as having members from Vancouver Coastal Health, VPD, and other groups.
So, but then you said almost always, so it's not a mandatory requirement? It's not something we can add as a condition of this approval?
We would intend to do it. I think our providers on all of these projects are planning to do it. If council wanted the extra assurance, they could direct us to have a CAC. But we would be intending to do one with these projects.
I appreciate that clarity, Alison. I think with that, I'm going to jump off the queue for a little bit and maybe come back. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Counselor Weeb, you're up for your first round, applicant or staff. And just remember, this is the first time, this is the only time you have a chance to ask applicant questions.
Yeah, I guess my first question is, what was the outcome of the needs assessment of the homeless population in Kitsilano to determine that single rooms were the best option to deliver the needs of the homeless population in Kitsilano?
Alison Dunnett, Senior Planner. In terms of the population of focus for the MOU for PIMSHI, the focus was not as granular as each individual neighborhood in Kitsilano or another neighborhood. But based on the overall homeless counts that is done, that's where we would derive the focus for the MOU.
Okay, I guess the question's to staff. How is that the reasoning why we did not use our current family housing policy on this project?
Yeah, this project is a focus on those who are homeless or experiencing homelessness. And based on the overall numbers that we have citywide within the count, is there is a focus on singles housing? So for this initiative, the focus is not on families. We have other initiatives in the pipeline with our partners, BC Housing and others, to deliver family units.
But we have a policy in City Vancouver that every building has a certain amount of family unit. So in this project, that's been waived, recognizing the needs of them. Okay.
Yeah, that's waived in seniors' projects and social housing projects and supportive housing projects when there's a different target.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Next one is the setback for the SRW, the Street Right Away, for future greenway purposes. Is that, recognizing the 2019 feasibility study showed a streetcar on the eastern edge of this project, does this building keep that feasibility alive and future the streetcar could still continue to go on the eastern edge of this project?
Thank you, Counselor, for the question, Chi Chan, Resoning Planner. Yes, that SRW is designed for a potential future streetcar.
Okay, so that is continued. Next is, it's great to see that the accessibility units have gone up 15%. Can you talk about the range of accessibility that this project's hoping to deliver, recognizing the number of people in with homelessness that deal with a disability?
I'm going to thank you for the question. I'm going to direct that to the applicant team.
Thank you, James Forsyth, BC Housing. So with respect to a lot of the supportive housing that we deliver, we do see that people may have a number of different challenges in their life, mobility and accessibility being parts of this as well. If this project is successful, as we move into further levels of design, we'd also look at different types of accessibility that may be needed, not just around wheelchair mobility, but also with site and hearing as well. Thank you.
That's fantastic. Thank you. My last one is, there was a slide showing that there is an 84% improvement in health and wellbeing. I'm wondering what indicators we use to determine health and wellbeing in a project like this? And is that something that we would do throughout the building's life cycle?
Celine Moblis, that research was research that we partnered with BC Housing to collect. And we looked at TMH, the first TMH buildings, and it was a survey of the tenants and their self-reported health outcomes. And we will, as we do with other projects, initial teneting, occupancy, we do collect some basic demographic information, and that we would be happy to share that with council as well.
Okay, and were there health and wellbeing design guidelines that were utilized to improve the health and wellbeing of people in this project? Is that something we look at for projects like this?
James Forsyth, BC Housing. So with respect to design guidelines, BC Housing has set out rigorous design requirements for all of our projects, far beyond code as well. And we simply do feel that those do contribute to those health and wellbeing measurements, whether it be access to daylight, the orientation of units, or other measures that just help people to be able to thrive. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks. I think we're at the end. Counselor Domenado, you have not gone yet, I think. Okay, so please go ahead up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, a couple of questions. Nick, I have a question for you from a service provider standpoint, if I may. Basically, what I understand from talking with individuals who work within the sector that 90 units is optimal in terms of managing, in terms of supportive housing. I'm just curious if you could comment on that.
Thank you, Nick Blackman, MPA Society. I think our focus isn't so much on the quantity, but on the quality of services we provide. And it's looking at those services and scaling it to the size of a building. And we have programs of various sizes throughout MPA, and that's where our focus is on the quality of services we provide.
Perfect, thank you. That's a perfect segue for my question for BC Housing. I'm curious if BC Housing, if you're able to share with council the annual operating budget envelope for this development. There's obviously the capital investment from the province and the CMHC, and then there's an operating budget, and that'll determine ultimately the FTEs and ratios. Are you able to give us some ballpark?
All right, I'll just jump in. I'm not sure if someone from BC Housing is going to answer. I think based on the answer earlier, Counselor, about where we're at in the process, that the nonprofit operator and BC Housing are still revising, and I heard them say negotiating that. I'm not sure they'd be in a position to speak to that number at this time.
I see James coming up, so thank you.
Not going to be a shrewd negotiator here. Unfortunately, no, I cannot share the specific details of that. What is important, though, is the operating funding for this project not only includes, you know, meal programs and all those other support services that are quite rare. And so the supportive housing funding program, having those key pieces is incredibly important to make sure that MPA can be successful in their operations, and ultimately, those tenants can be successful in their lives. Thank you.
Great, thanks, James. My next question's for staff, and I think probably most appropriately directed to you. And it's around, we've had a lot of questions and queries raised through letters, but we often get with existing supportive housing developments, it's around ultimately responsibility and accountability for the building and the public realm. And I'm wondering if staff could address that, because that often comes up. So around issues that might arise around the building, inside the building, adjacent to the building. And so I wonder if staff could comment on ultimately, who is responsible? Is it the nonprofit operator that's responsible, the city?
If I may, Celine Moblis, it's the responsibility of all the partners that are involved in this project through the community advisory committees, when the building is tenanted, their regular meetings to address any issues that might come around. Might happen right in the immediate adjacency of the building. The operator reaches out to neighbors to introduce themselves, ensuring that they're, you know, that area is tidy around the building. And we have worked together in a number of projects to proactively respond should an issue arise. I know oftentimes, perhaps the issue is a little bit broader than the immediate housing site. Council recently approved a Better Together pilot, which also helps support kind of some of those broader community-wide impacts, maybe not necessarily associated with the project, but we all have a role to play in keeping our communities healthy and safe.
Thanks. Can I just follow that up with around, would the Operation Management's Plan address that in terms of really specific protocols around sort of who does what and acts when, when issues do arise? And?
Yeah, correct. It has more details on the actual operations of the building, the types of supports that are there, the staffing that are there, contact information should there, should an issue arise, how a neighbor might get, can get ahold of someone in the building immediately. So it contains more of a detailed operations plan for the community to see and have as a resource.
Okay, thanks for that. I'm wondering, staff, and I may run out of time here. I'm actually looking for staff to describe the modifications that have been made from the initial proposal and then the, based on, there was public feedback, there was various open houses. Can you describe what's changed?
I'm going to actually save that because you're at right at the end of your time. Save that for your next round of questions. If you put yourself back on the list. Counselor Dejanova, you're up. Everybody's been through the first time.
I just had my question that I'd asked before. That was it. Oh, sorry.
Have you not gone? Haven't gone up first time. Okay, sorry. It's just hard to do on this queue. So Counselor Hardwick and Counselor R., you haven't had first round yet. Okay, I'm going to throw you on the queue here. Counselor Hardwick, okay. Counselor Hardwick, go up to five. I just whenever you're ready there.
So my question would be to BC Housing rather than staff, as to the applicant.
Go ahead with your question.
Okay, so I would like a response to the following statement. People with mental illness and addiction have limited opportunities to recover when they're forced to live with others who struggle with the same issues. When they are asked, the vast majority prefer independent living. Clinical experience and evidence clearly demonstrate that if you concentrate people who are mentally unwell and addicted into a single building, the chances of success are virtually nonexistent.
Somebody from the applicant team want to answer that? You're not required to answer, but you'd like to?
Thanks for the question, Heidi Hart in BC Housing. We have many examples provincially of wellness happening within the building. It's about the supports, the ranges of supports that are within the housing. Also welcoming our health partners to the site and creating space for them is very key. I'll speak to an example on Vancouver Island, where we have a very low barrier shelter in the basement of the building. The main floor is supportive recovery, and the third floor is low barrier or minimal barrier housing. So we do have examples, and we work through our coordinated access on a process basis to make referrals to appropriate housing solutions for people. Thank you.
So then, continuing on that, are you saying then that the statement that independent recovery-oriented housing, which differs from congregate housing in that it allows individuals suffering mental health and addictions to live independently as a small percentage of building tenants, is less desirable than this scenario in congregate living, putting all of the people in the same building?
BC Housing supports a variety of options, and that's why we partner with health authorities, with community partners, nonprofits. We know there needs to be a variety of resources along the housing continuum to allow for people's individual journey to wellness. And it looks very different for people. And that's why we use coordinated access process to really have the. And that's why we use coordinated access process to really have the conversation about what the person's needs are, to make sure that we can meet them within the building that they move to.
And why would we think that it was appropriate to put this congregate living across the street from a school and with, in very close proximity to another vulnerable population?
Thanks for the question. Fifty-seven percent of B.C. Housing's supportive housing sites around the province are actually within 500 meters of schools. So we have successful integration of our supportive housing with very diverse and inclusive communities.
With this congregate housing, with this number of units across the street from a school?
This site actually has a combination of both supportive housing and affordable housing, so it would be a very inclusive community, a variety of folks with varying degrees of support levels.
And what recourse is there for the city when, if there are issues that come out of this? I'll use another example. I've looked at other places, for example, the former Best Western on Kingsway, where there, when asked the question of what recourse does the city have if there are issues that are under, that come out of working with whoever's providing the supports? And I've been told in those instances that the city has no recourse operationally. Would that be different in this scenario?
Celine Mobles. Two oh five Kingsway is a city-owned building, so we do have a lease with the operator. So there's certainly some recourse also in our regulations. But I think we have a proven track record of delivering supportive housing in a variety of models, both through congregate and scattered site models, with B.C. Housing, with partners. And we have the ability to work collectively to respond to issues should they arise. So I think our approach is that we all have a partnership, we all have resources to bear, and we address those issues should they arise.
Thanks. That's the five. councillor Carr, up to five.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. My questions are starting with B.C. Housing or the MPA Society. I don't know which one is best. I'm in a position to answer the questions. So there is a mix of units projected in the referral report, and specifically of 129 units, fifty percent or sixty-five units will be supportive. So first question, will your ultimate tenoting agreement follow best practices for supportive housing?
Anyone from the applicant team?
B.C., yes. So Heidi Hartman, B.C. Housing, thanks for the question. Absolutely. We have so many great learnings provincially about the importance of coordinated access and really thinking about each and every person that moves in. And I would say to the 129 units, so absolutely, we'll use those best practices. We've really refined them. We use a nationally recognized tool to be able to refer folks and make sure that their support needs are met within the building.
Thank you. I appreciate that. But I have a few more follow-up, if it's okay. If you want to stay there, they're all on the same line. And I think that you might be the one to answer. So what is the best practice in terms of staff to tenant ratio for supportive housing?
That's something we'll be looking at closer to operation and negotiating through our operating budget. Our staffing models, I'll give you a bit of a framework of what the staffing looks like. Because there's meals, you know, we have to have food services staff. We have tenant support workers. You know, there are sometimes some, it's absolutely based on the nonprofit and what their staffing model is. We negotiate that budget. We finalize the staffing model. But we also make it flexible so that if in operationally it isn't sufficient or we need to make tweaks to how many support workers there are, the nonprofit can be responsive to making those changes.
Okay. And in terms of just the general, either research or if it's drilled down into best practice, what is the best practice in terms of, or is there any rule or guidelines around it for the maximum number of tenants needing the supports around either mental health or addictions in any one facility?
To answer that question, what I would say, it's about balancing the building. So really taking a look and really being mindful of each and every person that moves into the building. Every time a vacancy comes up, the operator, in conjunction with the placement table made up of partners from the community health services outreach, they determine, you know, can, do, what is the balance of the building? Do we need some lower needs, support needs staff? Or is it such that we have a very settled community? That we can take some more folks that may have more support needs?
Okay. And one final question. Is there a best practice related to the mix, including a mix of tenants that are needing addictions support versus mental health supports?
Again, it's really about the individual building and the operator knowing the folks that are in there and what, what, what the support levels are for the building. So again, each and every time a vacancy comes up, there's a community discussion amongst the partners that include the Vancouver Coastal Health, MPA as the operator of the building, and the folks that know the applicants that will be housed at the building.
Sorry, I just thought of one other question, what you were saying. Thank you for the answers. Do you have circumstances under which your operating agreement includes the fact that in that particular facility, there would be a requirement for abstinence from drugs or alcohol use?
We leave that to the operator. But this is, this housing site is going to be based on a harm reduction model. And that means meeting people where they're at. We can't make the qualification that each and every person that moves in there has mental health or addiction issues. These are people that need supports. They may have developmental disabilities, physical disabilities, where they can't live independently, and they need those 24/7 supports.
Thanks, that's the five.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your answers.
Okay, thanks. We're going to go back to the question queue. So council, we are at a quarter after nine. I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven councillors on the list. So just letting speakers know that I doubt we'd get through more than 10 speakers tonight. So if you're on the list, kind of 20 or over, you know, just wanted to let you know that so you can plan the rest of your night.
No, Mayor, my question is to staff, so I'll hold it off until after we hear from speakers.
Okay, thanks. councillor Kirby Young, up to five.
Yeah, thanks. My first question, I think that the application shows a pro zoning at approximately 85,000 millable square feet, notwithstanding, I guess, potential variation with conditions on the fourth plate size that's referenced. Can staff advise how many square feet are allocated for services and specifically harm reduction or treatment or other services of the total square footage? Anyone?
Somebody's coming down. So thank you, councillor, for the question. So first of all, we should say the entire building is for support services as much as is housing, dining room, kitchen, common laundry. There's an office space. These are all part of the support services.
Maybe, could, maybe I could narrow it down and focus the question for you, excluding bedrooms and office space, but I mean dedicated for things like harm reduction for services specifically, outside of, you know, laundry, meals and living?
Councillor, we don't have that exact number. We can get back to you on that one.
Okay, if you could, that would be great. I wanted to follow up on the question that was asked by councillor Carr with respect to the best practice and the ratio in terms of the number of tenants to staff. And I know that I heard the answer loud and clear that that depends on the specific building and the nonprofit operator, et cetera. But I'm, there must be a guideline. So can you share a ratio or a working guideline with us?
Thank you, councillor, for the question. We'll get the applicant to answer that.
Thanks. Thank you for the question. Heidi Hartman, B.C. Housing. We don't have a guideline for that. It really is based on the building. We also have to take a look at the design of the building. You know, we take into account design guidelines, just as James shared.
Okay, if there is a more specific answer, that's okay. I'll keep moving for a time. Thank you. My other question is, do staff have, we often hear with different rezonings, could be residential, rental buildings, whatever the case is, the importance of TDM programs, traffic demand management, et cetera. This will have some unique needs with respect to service vehicles, whether it's medical or public safety, that may be attending the site, given that there seems to be still work to be done with respect to the driveway or road access alignment. Can you comment on what the plan is for how you envision emergency response vehicles attending and supporting on the site? How will that work and flow across Arbutus between seven and eight?
Thank you, councillor, for the question. I will direct that question to Rosemary Draszkowicz in engineering.
Hi, Rosemary Draszkowicz, senior transportation engineer. Thank you for your question. So it sounds like there was a question there, councillor Kirby Young, about emergency service access in particular. So the proposed main entry to the building is going to be located on West Seventh. Emergency vehicles will be able to access the main entrance from Arbutus or West Seventh. The emergency, the vehicle entrance, the parking garage, that includes a passenger loading space as well as a loading space that can accommodate the emergency services, is proposed to be accessed from Arbutus Street. So that's all included in the conditions already.
So if you're an ambulance, they would be traveling down north-south in Arbutus for the most part?
Potentially, north-south on Arbutus or east-west on Seventh. There is also a condition, in appendix B, that requires the application to be clearly addressed from the northwest corner of the site to facilitate that ease for emergency vehicles coming from either direction.
The northwest corner, we're facing Delamont Park, that corner? Is that correct?
Yes, on the park side, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to leave my questions there for now.
Thank you. councillor Hardwick, up for your second round.
Thanks again, and this is more to the applicant, again. My understanding is that there have been controlled trials done around, with 500 people who are deemed to be hardest to house. The study compared the outcomes of recovery-oriented housing, congregate housing with support and existing care in Vancouver. And the findings have been published in leading peer-reviewed journals. And I quote, "Recovery-oriented housing resulted in dramatic reductions in crime, safer streets, fewer medical emergencies, cost effectiveness, and more social reintegration for people who have been socially and financially impoverished while living with mental health and addictions." And that congregate housing did not result in any of these improvements. Can you please respond to that statement in the context of this application?
Celine Mobles, maybe I'll turn it over to the applicant team after. The At Home Chez Swah, research project was a very important project in its time. And I would say that it's not one versus the other. We need a diversity of supportive housing. We have currently rent supplement programs, we have scattered site models, we have congregate housing, the research done by B.C. Housing in partnership with the city on the success of the T M H, and the outcomes for tenants are very good. People need agency, they need choice, they need the ability to choose the neighborhood that they want to live in and the type of community that they want to be a part of. So we need everything, and we need more of it. We have a target of 4,100 units of supportive housing, and every unit counts.
Is there any evidence to demonstrate that congregate housing would have the desired outcomes that you're describing, in the way that findings have been illustrated in other forms of housing?
Yes, and we can share some of that research with you.
I'll look forward to it.
Thank you.
councillor Hardwick, your questions?
Yeah.
Thank you. councillor Boyle, questions up to five minutes, staff or the applicant?
Thanks. I just wanted to go back to my question to B.C. Housing around funding, because I ran out of time when I asked before if this project doesn't go forward. Just want to clarify what I understood, that the funding, provincial and federal funding for the building and ongoing supports here couldn't be reallocated to a distributed model in Vancouver. It would go towards a project that's ready somewhere else in the province?
Thank you, councillor. james Forsyth, B.C. Housing. So B.C. Housing and the city of Vancouver and our applicant team, we've contributed quite a significant amount of funding to bring this product forward to where it is right now. We certainly wouldn't want to lose that. With respect to if this project is unsuccessful, I'm going to reiterate that there are significant needs for supportive housing throughout the entire province. And we have a commitment to the provincial government to deliver them as quickly as possible. And we need to, we need to deliver housing. It's as simple as that.
Okay. I appreciate that and won't belabor the point. I have one other quick question to staff, which I guess is related, which is, I'm wondering if you can remind us the number of unhoused residents either that we estimate we have now or that we know we had as of the last homeless count, which is of course, we acknowledge is an undercount. But just to get a ballpark of the number of people, of neighbors in the city who don't have housing right now.
Correct. So the last count was conducted in March of 2020. And we had just over 500 people that we were found sleeping outside and in outside locations. And we know from the research that that's likely a 20% undercount. Not everyone we find wants to be surveyed. And again, we're not able to find everyone to be included in the survey.
Okay. And I have one other question, related question, or related to the MOU, which is, there's of course, every summer, lots of discussion about people living in encampments in parks and other spaces. Can staff remind us the last time the park board applied for an injunction? My memory is that the judge said if there wasn't housing available, that the park board couldn't bring an injunction in. I'm just wondering if staff can help us connect that encampment conversation and the issue of housing?
And I might ask legal to also make sure that they might want to step in and answer that question. I think the issue was that shelters weren't considered adequate housing. We have always talked around, cameras around indoor spaces, but that shelters in this instance weren't considered adequate housing, that a self-contained housing unit like we have proposed here, and giving the people the ability to come inside, lock the door, make a meal, take a shower, that that was deemed more suitable.
Okay. I'll leave my questions there and save some for after speakers as well. Thank you, Mayor.
councillor Frye, up to five.
Great, thanks. So earlier, I think I heard james Forsyth mention that there would be no supervised injection services on this site. So I guess that sort of suggests there's a list of what won't be contemplated on this site. And I'm wondering if that's a function of the zoning or the operational plan or funding? Or did I hear that correctly, even?
To clarify, councillor, we noted that there will be no public safe injection site located at this property.
Okay, okay. Sorry, then I misheard that. I appreciate that clarification. Okay, okay, sorry, then I misheard that. I appreciate that clarification, then. Thank you. Shifting a little bit, what is what is the pool of housing need as far as, we heard Celine just describe the numbers, and I think today I heard in a different presentation, Celine was describing that only 40% of the current homeless have mental health or addictions, struggles, and I think that's maybe an important kind of lens to put on for some of the concerns people are talking about. What is the face of homelessness in the City of Vancouver right now?
Well, we are definitely seeing through the pandemic that there is a growing need for for deeply affordable housing. The trend data in our homeless counts consistently, they're older men, and they're getting older and more unwell as time goes goes by. So definitely, I think, again, as was mentioned earlier, the need for singles housing. I know we do have family homelessness in Vancouver, but I think through through the leadership of BC Housing, if a family presents as homeless, they are very quickly provided with Rensup or ensure that they are able to access housing. But but single individuals, predominantly male, and they're getting older. And and the longer you're homeless, the more challenges you have around your physical and mental health.
So I understand also that through your department, we're tracking a pretty significant loss in in single-room occupancy housing stock. Is this, would this considerably offset some of that loss of stock and prevent homelessness?
This project isn't directly associated with any SRO replacement. This is not SRO housing, it's self-contained social housing. We do have a goal under council's leadership to replace SROs with self-contained social housing, as they are an outdated housing form. And we do see, because of the inadequate form that they are with small 10 by 10 rooms, with shared common, shared washrooms and kitchens, that we do see a lot of more turnover in that stock. Having a home like this, there is a greater security of tenure and happiness for those folks that are able to access the housing.
We are losing SRO stock.
We are. We have a lot of regulations to to manage, manage the stock, and our goal is to replace it ultimately. But yes, there are challenges, repair the the age and condition of the buildings, it's an ongoing challenge. Yep.
Thank you. Now, for something completely different, I'm curious the details of what permanent modular housing is, as opposed to temporary modular housing. Is it the same modular unit that is being built more permanently, or is this something entirely different?
Thank you for your question. It's Heather Rowland, Director of Non-Market Housing Development. The temporary modular housing program, the buildings themselves are designed in such a way that they can be taken apart, moved, and put back together. If you recall, the the time limit on those sites was from five to 10 years, to a maximum of 10 years. These these projects are being designed on full foundations. They're using a modular form and prefabricated form of construction, so they can be constructed much more quickly. The disruption from the construction is minimized because that is happening off-site, or a lot of it is happening off-site. But they're on full concrete foundations and will be will be enjoyed for many, many years, 60 to 85 to 95 years.
Fantastic. And these modular components are being manufactured locally, or?
Depending on the contractor for each of the five different buildings. Some parts are fabricated regionally, I would say, maybe not locally, some locally, regionally, and some from further afield.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. I think that's it for questions from council. Again, after we hear from the 245 speakers, there will be another chance for council to ask questions to staff. So thank you so much for all that. We're at 25 to 10, so we'll try to get through the a few speakers. Let's see now. Just before we begin, I did want to restate just kind of the parameters of how we'll be interacting over the next few days. We're ensuring that all people who participate in the public hearing are treated fairly and respectfully. The language we all use in public hearings should reflect respect for all residents, and no form of discrimination is acceptable or tolerated. Discriminatory language includes attacks on groups of people and individuals. Our procedural bylaw prohibits council members from the use of words, tones, speakers, or gestures that expresses a negative view of the character of any person or groups of people. Members of the public are expected not to engage in improper conduct, which includes the use of expressions that promote hatred or are defamatory. The creation of a safe and inclusive environment for the public, staff, and council to participate is all of our responsibilities, so members of council may call a point of order if language used by another councillor or member of the public is not deemed respectful. As Chair, I will ask the speakers to modify their speech to ensure they are using respectful language. So we're going to start with the first speaker, who's by phone, is William Azarov.
Hi, Mayor and Council, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready, please.
Oh, thank you very much. So I'm William Azarov, CEO, Brightside Canadian Homes Foundation, and we're calling in to express our full support for this rezoning application. The 100 and 29 homes, this project will provide a critically needed unit mix of both affordable rental homes and homes with support, which play an important role in homelessness mitigation.
Just one second, just one second speaker. We do hear quite a lot of sirens perhaps in the background?
There's a siren running through the neighborhood. Yeah.
So so maybe if I could just get you to speak a little, a little slower and just directly into your receiver, that would be great.
Sure, I just closed my windows as well. Yeah, sorry about that. We are also glad to see MPA Society's selection as the operator. We see firsthand the importance of a vibrant and healthy community and appreciate the value of a fluid housing continuum that provides safe and dignified homes for every resident of the city. Vacancy rates for truly affordable rental homes such as these remain at record lows, and with homelessness on the rise, a combination of supportive and affordable housing that this rezoning application proposes will have a significant positive impact on the community and on helping to mitigate homelessness. This project has the additional potential to help provide desperately needed supportive and independent living homes for residents with mental illness that face barriers to finding housing. Brightside supports this proposal and encourages Vancouver City Council to do so as well. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I don't see any questions for you from council, so I'm going to move to the next speaker. Speaker number two is Laura Wilkie.
Hello.
Hi there. Please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Okay. I'm a, I'm a senior. I actually live in one of Azarov's homes. I was moved here from Marpole to Kitsilano. I, because I lived in Marpole, I fell in love with the greenway. It was very, very beautiful, full of spectacular wildflowers. And I would like to talk about the greenway now. I also wanted to talk about the park, but I think I'll give up on Delamont Park. Anyway, the greenway, I feel, will be excessively shadowed by that building. Nothing will grow there, because there is shadow on the part of the trees, there's shadows from the high tower. Bicycling, which I have done all my life, will be hard, because there will be a wall directly on the greenway from the tower. So that if anything happens, you know, it's going to be a place of great traffic along that greenway. Now it isn't, but then it will be, because everyone will be taking a shortcut to the Arbuthys Station, and they'll be taking that shortcut along the greenway. So therefore, if you're on a bicycle and there's a toddler or a dog or something, and you have to swerve, you will swerve straight into the building. There's no way you're going to avoid it. Also, Human Studio provides communal garden boxes for the greenway. It also provides a cactus and pebble garden, which will sit on top of the statutory right-of-way. None of that will be able to grow, because, you know, there's no sun, there's no light in the whole tunnel. But anyway, I don't only want to speak about the greenway, which I am very fond of, but I wanted to say that the greenway was supposed to be a place of communication between green spaces, certain kinds of rural points within Vancouver to be linked up. And I feel that the, the Bluebell Wood would be an excellent addition to the greenway. It would be an excellent addition to the whole of that area of Broadway, which is going to be full up of high towers. You know, it's no sense pretending that that's going to be a quiet area. There is going to be so much traffic and so much foot traffic down from Arbuthys Station down to Kits Beach. So many people walk down there already, but when the station is built, there's just going to be so much walking, so much cycling, which together with, you know, like somebody says, ambulances, service vehicles, drop-offs and pickups from the station for the school, taxis, bus loops, handydarts, you know, that's, I feel that the building is in the wrong place. I'm not saying the building is a bad building, I just feel it's in the wrong place. I think it should be on a brownfield site with room for its own garden, so that therefore it is not, I mean, residents have a right to use Delamont Park to sit in. People can't say that Delamont Park is only for small kids. Those residents have a right, but you know, kids won't go there anymore because their parents won't let them go. I remember my own child was always picking up cigarette butts on beaches. I had to watch him like a hawk, you know? And people who are homeless tend to be 80% nicotine addicted. So therefore, you know, the park will be full of cigarettes. It will be, I'm not saying it will, there will be needles there, but some people will be afraid of that. Yes, some parents won't send their kids there at all. In fact, most of them won't. Anyway, I think it should be on a brownfield site with room for its own garden and possibly its own balconies, you know, a quiet site, not something that is chaos all around it. I also feel that the Bluebell Wood, I don't know if you know it, but it's made of logs.
I'm just going to stop you there.
It was torn down.
I just wanted to stop you there, because you are at your five minutes, and I don't see any.
Oh, okay.
I don't see any questions from council, so I just wanted to thank you so much for calling in this evening.
Okay, that's okay. I had a lovely time talking to you. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you so much. Okay, thanks. We have speaker number, what are we at now, quarter to 10? We have speaker number three, who is Matav Leg, Leghi? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Leghi, thanks.
I'm sorry. I just, I don't have my glasses. I forgot them, so I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you so much. Good evening, council. As you know, I'm a campaign lead for Women Transforming Cities, and I'm calling in to express Women Transforming Cities' position to the Arbuthys and West 8th Project, which is that we support this project wholeheartedly. We continue to live in a housing crisis, which jeopardizes the lives of so many residents every single day. An emergency such as this one must prompt acute action. This project is a tangible opportunity for council to take action on the urgent need for affordable and supportive housing in the city, an issue every single councillor has said is a priority area of action for them. Neighborhoods should be welcoming new community members across different housing models. I'm here to share a little bit about our findings in the hot pink paper campaign, which we run before every municipal election to figure out what the priority issues are for those most marginalized who live in our city. It is our role as an organization to work to amplify, empower, and center the voices of those most made marginalize by the systems we are working to dismantle. And as part of our campaign, WTC, we went beyond, above and beyond to hear from as many residents as we can by attending community events, showing up to family places, and directly speaking with those who are traditionally omitted from participating in the public hearings such as this one, due to barriers such as time, employment, and care work. This following is what we have learned from our polling. It shows just how crucial affordable and supportive housing projects such as this one will be in alleviating the pressures of not only finding secure housing, but also other urgent concerns facing Vancouver residents. We hosted input sessions, inviting community members, and met with over 20 service delivery community organizations about what they wanted to see changed for the better in our city. A critical component of our campaign is to dream big, to believe with commitment, determination, and truly dedicated civil servants, it is possible to actually create a city that works for everyone. And so part of our input processes, our main question was, do people feel like they belong in Vancouver? And if so, what is preventing them from feeling like they belong? And unsurprisingly, housing was the concern that came up the most for our residents. 80% of residents indicated housing is an issue that is most important to them in the October Vancouver Municipal Election, and 86% of respondents selected housing and rent affordability as a reason they believe Vancouver is not a city where they can belong. When looking at how marginalization compounds this feeling of not being welcome, the stats become even more stark. For Indigenous participants, trans women, and gender non-conforming participants, 100% of them indicated housing and rent affordability as the reason they do not feel like they belong in Vancouver. We at Women Transforming Cities do not believe that this is what residents deserve. It is not an acceptable reality from the same city that has identified housing as one of the key themes from the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women in Girls' Call for Justice review and the Red Woman Rising Recommendations review. Approving this project is a tangible way to take action on reconciliation, to expand affordable and quality housing for as many people as we can. That starts with ensuring that 129 people can be housed at 7th and Arbuthys, though as I learned in council question period, this number could have been higher. When respondents were asked about how they feel about other issues such as safety, mobility, and employment, they told us that housing was at the core. Some mentioned they had no housing security, having continuously been pushed out of their homes due to rising rents or rent eviction. This precarity will leave them with few living options if they remain in the city and will be unsafe. Indigenous organizations, youth, seniors, family places, and other women's organizations told us that they are seeing food insecurity grow, have seen food insecurity grow in the last few months like never before, and more and more low-income service users are having to choose between paying rent and feeding themselves and their families. Vancouver also remains the city with the most services, food programs, recovery centers, and cultural centers. When residents are pushed out of the city due to unaffordability, they lose access to these critical services. These points were shared by Indigenous youth groups and seniors advocacy groups especially. It is therefore increasingly telling that even organizations who are not specifically working on the issue of housing stated as their number one concern for those who use their services. Our polling shows us that we cannot continue to talk about housing independently from other crises facing our residents. I'm grateful to be the third speaker that you will hear from today, as this is a long public hearing, because while there are those who oppose this project, there are many others who have and continue to express that they need housing now. That will make them feel safer. That will make them feel like they belong in the city, and that being able to stay in the city will keep them close to their family, friends, and the services that they rely on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move to the next speaker. Thanks very much. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. I wonder if it's possible for the Clerk's to check to see, I noticed that after the next speaker, there are three listed here that are in person. I don't know if they are here, but I would move to extend this meeting to listen to the speakers who are here in person, up to speaker number seven.
Okay, go to the, go at least to speaker number seven. Okay, thanks. We have a second here, all in favor of that? Thank you. Any opposed? I don't hear anyone, so we can extend. Speaker number four is Serena Eglund.
Hi, thanks for having me. My name is Serena Eglund. I am strongly in support of this rezoning application. I'm a renter in Kitsilano, and I have been for seven of the nine years that I've lived in the city. I believe that affordable and supportive housing belongs in every single neighborhood of our city. Kitsilano is a very well-resourced neighborhood that has an opportunity to step up and lend support to residents of Vancouver who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. One great thing about this proposal is that no residents will be displaced. Through the conversation regarding Broadway Plan, we heard that this was a huge consideration and a worry for current tenants, and rightly so. It is such a rare opportunity that support has been offered by provincial and federal governments on a housing project that won't displace anyone. We learned earlier that the money would be lost if this does not pass, which is another reason this opportunity cannot be passed up. There's a lot of evidence that shows that the housing-first model works. We have over 2,000 people that homes in our city, many who could benefit from the supported units in the building to reach our health goals. Homelessness has dire impacts on one's social and mental health and physical health, and frankly, it's extremely difficult to access healthcare when someone does not have a home. As a result, people's health conditions get worse, and they have to access an already stretched-in emergency department and healthcare system. The practice of kettling people who require support into the downtown east side leaves no opportunity for people who want to leave that community to do so. It contributes to stigma and discrimination in our community and our city. Stigma and discrimination that ultimately Stigma and discrimination that ultimately contribute to deaths from the toxic drug supply. Housing is preventative medicine. You'll hear tonight from opposition that this building is not right for the community and that it should be reworked to involve nuclear families or single mothers and children. I implore you to consider that families can look a million different ways, and that single people and people with non-traditional families are just as deserving of housing as everyone else. We are living in a housing crisis and a drug toxicity crisis. Harm reduction is also an evidence-based approach to substance use, and while it's part of the later conversation, I just want to note that I'm very grateful to see that, uh, supervised consumption site is included as part of the housing model if the rezoning application passes. Housing is a basic human right. As elected officials, it's my perspective that you've agreed to do everything you can to support Vancouver's equity framework by providing opportunities for residents of Vancouver who have not had access to opportunities such as safe housing. Uh, I urge you all to vote yes for this application, and thanks for having me.
Thank you so much for your comments and time this evening. Uh, I don't see any questions for you, so we are gonna move to the next speaker. At council, we are moving to the in-person speakers, starting with number five, Brian Palmquist.
Thank you. I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed spot rezoning at Eighth and Arbutus. There are three reasons for my opposition. Firstly, to councillors who, who brought this up earlier, there is no independent peer-reviewed science supporting successful outcomes for this many people with this many issues in this form of housing. But now there should be, but the provincial government has shut down the funding of independent research in this area. There is our research indicating this model of housing does not work, and Dr. Julian Summers will speak later in the queue about this. Secondly, the independent peer-reviewed science that does exist supports a more distributed approach. Fewer folks in, in each of many more facilities with many more supports, an approach with real hope for improving the lives, lives of all affected. Thirdly, supporting the second one, the city has already completed spot rezoning of more than eleven thousand rental homes that have not yet been built, plus over twenty thousand rental homes that are in the current approvals queue, plus at least twelve thousand rental homes contemplated in projects like Sinoak and the Jericho Lands. That's forty-three thousand rental homes, of which a small percentage could, could be distributed for the folks currently slotted into Eighth and Arbutus. Others will talk more intelligibly than I about the independent peer-reviewed science around more widely distributed supportive housing as compared to the approach proposed for this site, involving as it does the de facto warehousing of a hundred, a hundred and twenty-nine people in metal micro-suits. One of the few permanent projects in the city anywhere close to the size of this project and with similar resident composition is the Marguerite Ford Project, a hundred and forty-seven homes in a high-rise format opened in twenty thirteen near Olympic Village. Vancouver Police Department data about nine-one-one calls to the area of this project show that as compared to the average of calls in the two years preceding its opening, nine-eleven calls increased seventeen hundred percent in the two years after its opening. Various non-scientific folks, including the provincial minister for housing, David Eby, have assured council and residents that after settling in period, all will return to normal. This is not square with the fact that eight years after its opening, in Marguerite Ford, that is, this area still receives fifteen percent more nine-eleven calls than it did before the project opened. Another comparison supporters of this project, including Minister Eby, make us to the Stanford Apartments at, at Fur and Seventh, which of course are operated by MPA. On paper, it's a good comparison, and especially as it's operated by the same folks, except it's not low-barrier housing. It allows no drug use unless, unlike this proposal. The fact that Minister Eby has specifically referred to this project in his "don't worry" letter to council is confusing and unhelpful, a classic apples-to-oranges comparison. Others will, sorry, to summarize my concerns, peer-reviewed science says this proposal is bad. Peer-reviewed science says distributed housing is a good idea, which this is not. Data says this will endanger its neighborhood. The submissions from MPA, BCHMC, and staff are narratives and hopes and self-reported outcomes, not supported by data and science, and they should be. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Uh, Councilor Herbert, you're up for five minutes.
Thank you, Brian. Um, housing crisis, housing pipeline. I know you've done a lot of research. Um, could you elaborate for a moment about how, from your research, how many, um, homes are in the pipeline and how those break down?
Well, in addition to the forty-three thousand rental homes, there are, uh, at least seventy thousand strata homes that are, um, in the, in the pipeline, as you put it, and that's not including, uh, proposals that haven't come forward yet. So that's Sinoak, Jericho Lands, the Remfrew and Rupert Stations, and, you know, it's a, it's a long list of things that are in the, we're gonna do this, but we haven't brought it to council stage. So my rough calculation, uh, done earlier today, when my earlier version of this was a hundred and fifty thousand homes as a minimum are already, um, spoken about, if you will. And that does include the thirty thousand homes that the Broadway Plan contemplates as well.
How does that reconcile then in, in terms of population growth to accommodate? You know, again, because we're talking about a full spectrum of housing here.
Yeah, well, a hundred and fifty thousand homes represents, uh, three hundred and thirty thousand, um, residents. So that's at, at two point two per unit, so that's sixty, seventy thousand more than the uh, two hundred and sixty thousand that's been tossed out there, which is, uh, more than the, which is substantially more than the uh, historic rate of population increase in the city of Vancouver, which is plus or minus one percent. So the two hundred and sixty is one point three percent. I had no idea what three hundred and thirty is. My, my mental math is falling apart this late in the evening.
Do you have any idea what would drive that kind of population growth to, to support that, these, uh, pipeline numbers?
Jobs that we hope will come, um, people that we think might come, except that we only get sixteen percent or seventeen percent of the immigrants in the last, the, the big year, the four hundred and thousand and five, four hundred and five thousand person year that we had last year, um, which was the biggest since nineteen eighteen. Um, in that huge year, uh, sixty thousand people came to BC, of whom Vancouver had a net game of, of minus five thousand.
So the key point is that it's difficult to, to reconcile the narrative with the facts as you've been able to assemble them.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Good. Uh, Councilor Swanson has questions for you? Go ahead, Councilor Swanson.
Yeah, of the hundred, did you say hundred and fifty thousand units that are coming? I'm just wondering, uh, what percentage of them rent for three hundred and seven, seventy-five dollars a month?
Well, I, I tell you what I would say, is if you were to say to the, um, to the, to the proponents who are pushing all this stuff, a condition of, of a spot rezoning in, let's say, the Broadway Plan is that five percent of the units need to be rented at three hundred and seventy-five dollars a month, otherwise, don't bother us. Um, that, that would, that would be an indicator right there. I mean, I have no, no other knowledge of the numbers, but I, I know that other municipalities in Burnaby as one have a lot stricter, um, and more pervasive and simpler, uh, approaches to the provision of affordable housing in their jurisdictions, and, uh, so far, we don't.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions for you. Thanks so much for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, we have, uh, Karen F. Finnan, next, speaker number six.
Hello.
There, up to five minutes whenever you're ready. Thanks.
I, um, my name is Karen Finnan. I'm a longtime Kitsellano resident and a volunteer with the Kitsellano Coalition, which opposes this rezoning. I had a speech written for tonight, but I've been here since when this hearing started on this rezoning application tonight. I'm absolutely stunned that Mayor Stewart shut down discussion tonight on the very matters that this neighborhood is so acutely concerned about. The effect is that councillors are being asked to vote on supportive housing as a general proposition for this site, instead of the suitability of this particular project for this particular site. I can tell you that the community doesn't care what this building looks like and technical issues about setbacks. We care about the safety of our children and our senior citizens. We care about our seniors being able to use the Arbutus Greenway without fear. We care about our children being able to use Delamont Park as they have for generations. And we care about the individuals placed in the project, how they will be cared for. Because if they don't receive the care they need, this project will be a failure for them and for the neighborhood. A BC housing representative said tonight that success is about the supports available, but no one will tell us what the supports will be for this project. This is operational information that we are not allowed to ask anything about until this building is a done deal, which is exactly the term that David Eby has used in connection with this project. Why is it that the Eighth and Arbutus neighborhood is being asked to make a leap of faith? The message it is coming through loud and clear tonight is that our concerns don't matter enough for the most basic of information to be provided to councillors and neighborhood stakeholders. BC housing has claimed success tonight with congregate housing models. Where is the data to prove that assertion? Oh, wait, the provincial government demanded that Dr. Julian Summers destroy the data from seventeen years of study of the outcomes of congregate living. I will wait with bated breath for the examples of successful one hundred-plus-unit low-barrier supportive housing projects for the hardest-to-house of the homeless population. While Chi Chan has represented here tonight that approximately fifty percent of units will be at the shelter rate of income, the coalition has read the referral report, and it clearly says that a minimum of fifty percent of units will be at the shelter rate. Neither David Eby nor the city has clarified that language, which allows sixty, eighty, or a hundred percent of units to rent at the shelter rate. The data that we do have is in the FOI production Kitsellano Coalition received from the VPD regarding the Marguerite Ford Apartments, which the previous, uh, speaker referred to. Marguerite Ford Apartments has a hundred and forty-seven units of low-barrier housing for the hardest-to-house. The same demographic that BC housing has stated all along will be housed at Eighth and Arbutus. In the first two years of operation, Marguerite Ford had nine hundred and seventy-eight calls to the VPD for service. In the last two years, ending May twenty twenty-two, there were eight hundred and fifty-five police calls, a decrease in nine years of operation of only twelve percent. This is what we can expect for the Eighth and Arbutus neighborhood. This is what David Eby calls blending in nicely with the neighborhood. To Councillor Dominado's point that ninety units is optimal, that is not the case. The province's own program framework for addressing homelessness is published in October twenty, uh, two thousand and seventeen, recommends forty to fifty units per project. Coast Mental Health, a supportive housing operator, has told the coalition that fifty units is the sweet spot for supportive housing. Most importantly, Coast declined to bid on the Eighth and Arbutus project because it was deemed too large and a poor fit for the neighborhood. Coast stated that Marguerite Ford is an embarrassment to the supportive housing industry. This is what David Eby wants to put in our neighborhood. Councillors, we didn't, we didn't elect you to simply rubber stamp David Eby's agenda. We elected you to find the best solutions for the vulnerable in our communities. Councillors should demand a model of housing for Eighth and Arbutus and every other social housing site in the city that will be an accomplishment for you, not an embarrassment. What do you want your legacy to be? Thank you.
Thanks. You do have questions from, uh, Councilor Hardwick? Uh, go ahead, Councilor Hardwick, up to, uh, five minutes. I'm gonna ask the, uh, just gonna ask the gallery just to, uh, keep from applause or, or making noise, so we can continue with our business here. Councilor Hardwick, please go ahead.
Thank you, uh, very much, and I appreciate your comments about the data deficit. But what I would like to know is what you think would be appropriate at this site? You must have given that considerable thought.
Absolutely, we have. So we have been working with Dr. Julian Summers and learning from him, and that's what we ask councillors to do too, to learn. Think about what is the best model for this site. That's what we wanted to know. Kitsellano has supportive and social housing. We support supportive and social housing, and we support supportive and social housing for that site. But what we ask is for you to approve a model that will satisfy the concerns of the neighborhood and be a success for the individuals that live in that project. And that's the model that Dr. Julian Summers researched. Over seventeen years that he's gathered shows is the right model, the scattered, uh, housing model, where you put small numbers of troubled individuals facing homelessness, mental illness, and addiction in any number of sites all across the city. We're not saying this shouldn't be in Kitsellano. This should be everywhere in Vancouver, but it needs to be done well. It needs to be done in accordance with the science. We have the research. All we need to do is follow it. Existing rental stock can be used to accomplish this now. Dr. Julian Summers has stated this. I hope some of you have heard some of the appearances that he's made on radio and some of the articles that he's written. I invite you to read the study that SFU published on homelessness. This can be done, but it requires the political will, and today, our government doesn't have it. The provincial government had this study, and they shelved it, and then they asked Julian Summers to destroy his data. Is this where we are? Is this the best that we can do for vulnerable people and the communities that they live in?
Why do you think the political will is there? Or would you perceive the political will is there to build this congregate housing?
Well, uh, Mayor Stewart and David Eby entered into a memorandum of understanding in April of twenty twenty-one to house three hundred and fifty individuals from the homeless community as fast as possible. And apparently, the route that is seen as the route of least resistance is to build the biggest buildings possible, and you can check off a hundred and twenty-nine individuals all in one spot, instead of doing the work for those individuals, so to find a place for them to live where they can succeed, where they can reintegrate into society, where they can reunite with their family, where they won't be stigmatized by living in a hundred and twenty-nine steel boxes. I heard, I couldn't believe it when I heard tonight that the city's solution to having family housing, as the Kitsellano Coalition and the neighborhood has requested, is to have family members living in different steel boxes in this tower. That's not family reintegration. That's not family reunification. That's just ridiculous, is what that is. So we can do this, follow the science, councillors. As for something more, we can be a leader in North America. We can be a leader in the world if we do this properly. We can't just take the short-term solution, uh, at the expense of long-term benefit. And that's what will happen here. If you build a hundred and twenty-nine permanent units at that site that are studio units, that is all it will ever be. You cannot convert those units into family units. You can't even convert it into a one-bedroom. It will only ever be a stigmatizing project where people will say, oh, that's where the junkies live, that's where the nuts live, and that's where the criminals will come, one block away.
Just going to, uh, curb your language there, please, just to keep it respectful and just so we don't.
I'm absolutely respectful to those who suffer mental illness and from addiction, but other people are not.
So, but please, don't use that language here. Thank you.
In any event, it, it's seen somehow as beneficial and, and as something recommending this site that we're going to put it one block from a subway station. A subway station is going to bring in the criminals that are going to victimize these people in the, at the site. Why would we make it easier for that to happen? That is what will happen, and that crime will bleed out into the neighborhood as well.
Thanks so much. Uh, that's the five minutes, and we're off to Councillor Frye, up to five, for questions to speaker.
Yeah, so, um, there's a lot to unpack, and I appreciate that you're speaking for a larger community, so I'd thank you for allowing me to ask you some questions. So first off, recognizing that, that the revised application, as we're now discussing here, is, is only half that, a hundred and twenty-nine is actually supportive housing, and that's... Do you accept that?
No, I don't. That's not the language in the referral report, councillor. I, I would be delighted if the city could provide confirmation tonight that there will be only fifty supportive housing units at the shelter rate, and there will be, or sorry, fifty percent units at the shelter rate and fifty percent at the, at the, uh...
Low end market. That, that is, that is what I'm...
Very low income rate.
That is certainly my understanding of the report that's before us, but I will, will double-check that, so let's just work on that, that particular assumption and, and, um, I, I think there's an opportunity here because the proponents are here listening to you and, and BC housing and, and MPA, and, and recognizing that the tenancy mix of supportive housing is important, and, um, you, you appreciate that there is a larger gamut of what supportive could mean. It's people with disabilities, it's elderly people. It's not necessarily, um, people who may pose, uh, concerns to... pose concerns to your community. Is that fair to say?
Absolutely.
So there's an opportunity, because where I'm trying to kind of go with this is like, how do we make it better and assume that we have a finite amount of land? This is, you know, the province is showing up with the money, the feds are showing up with the money. We have a tonne of people who need better housing and are not thriving in SROs, and this could be an opportunity for something great. So I guess, is there, assuming that we have to move forward with this in that sort of current iteration, as I've described it, half and half, what kind of supportive housing do you see and would you like to see and could we find working?
I don't support that you have to move forward with the project as currently conceived. Council can say no. Council can come back to the table. Council can look at the social science research and find something better. But if BC Housing and council insists upon moving ahead with a project that warehouses individuals, why isn't BC Housing come to the community and offered the type of project that exists in Victoria at Mount Edwards? That project is abstinent-based. Individuals must be 55 years or older. They must not have criminal convictions for violent crimes, and they must have just low to moderate mental health needs. Why is that not being offered to the community to try to allay some of our concerns? Why is it you will take what BC Housing says is going here, and you will like it?
Okay, let me pivot a little bit, and again, appreciate the time to answer these questions, and I'm trying to kind of dance around and be, you know. We saw the same sort of pattern play out with the timber modular housing at Marple, adjacent to Churchill and Sir Wilfred Laurier, and there was a lot of concerns, and none of those really came to pass. And I think one of the big mitigating factors was the advisory, community advisory committee that included the Laurier PAC. And would you see the community, if that was on offer, would you see the community willing to participate? Would you participate as a representative on an advisory committee?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, councillor, an advisory committee is a Band-Aid on a problem. Decisions need to be made to satisfy the community's concerns before a project is built, not a committee later, which is going to make complaints and hope that somebody comes and fixes them. And the projects that you refer to are much smaller than this project, and my understanding is the Marple one is some 500 metres away from a school, not 20 metres away from an elementary school and 20 metres away from a toddler park.
So I, again, I haven't heard subsequently, I think it's closer than that, and the Reederman residences, I understand, have been successfully integrating with the community. I'm just, unless you've heard otherwise, maybe in...
I'm not familiar with the Reederman residents.
Okay, okay. Oh, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks very much. I don't see any other questions for you, so thanks for coming in and sharing your views. I am going to move to our last speaker is Stephen Boas. Presentation?
Yes, please.
Okay. Just wait for you to get all set up and then...
Yeah, and like last time, just press play and it will auto-advance. It's much simpler.
Just one second, please. We're just going to make sure that we're, making sure that it's up on the public screen too. Just takes a second. That's fine. There we go. Great. Go ahead, up to five.
Sure. Thank you. Press play. My name's Stephen Boas. I'm a Vancouver resident and renter, and I work within a five-block radius of the site. I know the area. My presentation will focus on urban design analysis. I will look at the scale, the fit, and the shadow impacts of the proposed development, and explain why I'm opposed to this rezoning at its current form. The Google Earth model actually shows the neighbourhood and the form around it and the scale. Brian Pompous and I worked together to create a 3D computer model of the entire plan area for the Broadway Plan, and I modeled the initial version of the application. Subsequently, I updated this AC model. Now, it's important to note that this tower here at Kiefer and Main is actually a 17-story tower, but when we look at stories, this tower is actually lower than the one that's proposed here at Arbutus because of the difference in floor-to-floor height. So this is actually equivalent to a 17- or 18-story tower. And if you look at the Broadway Plan, this does not conform to the Broadway Plan, because the Broadway Plan's very clear residential floor-to-floor heights of 3.0 metres or 10 feet are supported in this area, which is the Kitsalau North Area A as well. And the staff have claimed that this is generally aligned with the Broadway Plan policies. It does not. If you look at the frontage, this is 75 feet. The Broadway Plan has set 150 feet in this area. If there's a 99-foot relaxation, then it does not align either. There was an amendment made by councillor Dominado regarding new buildings should minimize shadowing impacts at independent schoolyards, particularly during school hours, was broadly supported by council. So I'm going to look at that and look at the shadow impacts. If we look at the shadows, it would be cast on June 21st at 9:00 AM. Well, that's the shadow. That's not minimizing the shadow impact. It's actually very, very substantial, and the school is in session. I was there last week. The referral report claims that all our six-story tower could be built, maybe on RM4. So I did a model of that, looking at the floor plate of what's in the staff report. I extruded that, and I'm going to have a comparison here with the shadows also at this June 21st, 9:00 AM time on the summer solstice, the longest day of the year. And there's the six-story building, which doesn't quite follow RM4, but for the sake of argument, I will use that as an illustration because it's something that staff was looking at. That's the comparison again with June 21st at 9:00 AM, where the shadow impacts are not minimized, and it does not follow the Broadway Plan direction here. Then I'm going to go back to May 21st, 9:00 AM, back a month, very large shadow impact as well at 9:00 AM over the entire area. Compare that with the six-story building on that floor plate, and you can see that it's not the same to suggest that a six-story building has a similar shadow is, I think, misleading. Here, we look at the 9:00 AM on May 21st, very large shadow impact, and I'm going to just look at a couple of other ones. I've also texture mapped the building from the staff report. This is 8:30 AM in the morning on March 20th, spring equinox, completely shaded, and schools already essentially started because of the school hours, looking at times, you know, for all the way to 10:15 with the first recess, 9:00 AM, different dates in April and May, and there is substantial shadow impact. Now, I'm going to get to the Delamont Park, and Broadway Plan again says that there should be no shading on the equinox from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And the shadow actually does fall on the park. I did a very detailed computer model. You can see the berm, and the shadow of the building would fall within the park boundary. One was after two, this is after three, so I've done the accurate modeling, and the staff report is a little bit off in terms of the shadow analysis. Shadow grows very, very long in the shoulder season, October 21st, 1:30 PM, it's covering almost the entire playground, and it just gets longer and longer and longer through the shoulder season. Here's the plan view. The staff report actually cuts off the top of the shadow there. I've shown the shadow at 2:00 PM on October 21st. And if we look at the 2:00 PM time, I've got mine on the left, going past six, and the shadow in the staff materials is cut off in the middle of the park, so it's very, very long. There's a little bit of difference because I suppose that the other one wasn't done under daylight savings time. Here is 1:00 PM under daylight savings time. So to kind of wrap it up, we go back to the schoolyard. We have a very large shadow impact. It does not minimize it, does not follow the Broadway Plan, and yeah, there are many issues in the scale and unit count.
You're at your five minutes, but you do have questions from councillor Hardwick.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Why should the shadow matter?
Why have it actually in the analysis? Why have it in the Broadway Plan? Why have it as a direction to... I think that's like kind of a rhetorical answer, but there's clear direction in the Broadway Plan to protect solar access to the parks and to the schools, including the independent schools. And it's just, it's livability, it's access to sunlight, it's for healthy living.
Well, this is about healthy living, I think, and in balance, I think what council will be asked to do is to, you know, to weigh, is shadow more important than, you know, this housing being provided? How would you balance that?
Well, I, the shadow is just one impact. You also have almost zero property line setback on, you know, one of the sides on Arbutus. You've got minimum setbacks on Eighth that don't follow RM4. There are issues just of scale alone, of precedent, and the unsuitability of this site, that 75-foot wide site. Like, that's in the Broadway Plan, that this site is too small. So I don't see how it could be supported if you're going by your own policies that took, you know, years to develop. You're just putting that aside and saying that that doesn't matter. And I think we're talking about, does the form of development meet the criteria? And I don't think it does.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions for council, so thanks so much for coming in tonight twice. Thank you. And council, so that's it for our motion that was brought forward by councillor Carr to extend to hear from the speakers in person. We're going to recess now, and we will come back tomorrow evening, Wednesday, June 29th at 6:00 PM. So thanks, everybody, for being here tonight, and we'll see you tomorrow at 6:00, but special council meeting in the morning for the capital plan, starting at 9:30. Thanks so much. Just remember, council, please don't discuss this item with somebody, because we are in the middle, or anybody, because we're in the middle of the public hearing. We have to wait for the close of the speakers list before we begin debate. Thanks very much.